The Clatsup County Planning Commission meeting on Tuesday, June 14th, 2022 will come to order. Will the staff please take the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Crash Hour is excused. Commissioner Farrar?
Here.
Commissioner Orr is excused. Commissioner Kwong?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson is excused. Chair Gardner?
Present.
Commissioner Powers?
Here.
I'm Clancy Adams. Staff is here and Gail Hendrickson.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome the public. The Planning Commission is the official venue for public involvement in planning and community development for Clatsup County. We thank you for your interest and involvement and welcome your thoughts anytime via email or verbal public comments during these meetings. Moving on to the agenda, do we have any changes to the agenda from staff or commissioners?
None from staff.
I've been just kind of adding on to the end good of the order and I'd like to do that again today just because it is, I think my and Commissioner Orr's last meetings with the commission. Is that acceptable to the group?
Yes.
Okay, I'll take a motion in a second to adopt the agenda with that change.
I move we adopt the agenda for Tuesday, June 14th, meeting with the one addition at the end of the meeting.
I second that.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. The agenda is adopted. Next, we'll do business from the public. This is an opportunity for anyone to give a brief presentation about any land use, planning issue or county concern that is not on the agenda today. All speakers are asked to state their name and address before speaking, and if you're representing a group or organization or business, to please identify that representation. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak today on a topic that's not on the agenda? Looks like we have Commissioner Johnson joining us. Welcome.
Thank you. Sorry I'm late. I had a hard time getting on here, so I finally figured out how to get in here.
Great, thanks. I expected you'd be on a fishing boat, so.
Almost.
Good to have you. Okay, anyone from the public? Sounds like, doesn't look like anyone is raising their hand at this time, so we can go ahead and move on to our public hearings. And so we have six public hearings today. The revisions to the Clatsup County Comprehensive Plan, recommendations to the Board of Commissioners regarding the six community plans. So we'll get started with agenda item number two. This is a legislative hearing regarding revisions to the Clatsup County Comprehensive Plan, Clatsup Plains Community Plan Update. Will the staff please make their report?
Yes, thank you Chair. For the record, Gail Hendrickson, Community Development Director. The Clatsup County Community Plan consists of not only the main plan that covers all of the unincorporated areas and its 18 goals, but it also consists of six community plans, one for each of our planning areas. The Clatsup Plains Plan, which basically covers from the south end of the Warrenton city limits down into portions of unincorporated county to the junction with Highway 26 and along that 101 corridor, was originally adopted on November 21st, 1979, and that was via Ordinance 79-10. The Clatsup Plains Planning Area itself includes approximately 16,000 acres within that northwest region of the county, and includes Camp Reilia, it includes Sunset Beach area, and of course, the areas outside of unincorporated Gerhart and Seaside. Over the years, it's been amended several times, and in the memo that was provided with your plan today, there were, was a list of ordinances that did amend the Clatsup Plains Community Plan since its original adoption in 1979. The Clatsup Plains Community Advisory Committee consisted of, over time, about six different community members who met monthly. For the community plans itself, they met from August through December of 2021 to rework and update this plan. And so it is really a complete rewrite of what was included in the 1979 plan. However, you'll see if you were to compare the two documents that there's a lot of similarities in the issues that are facing the area. So for example, housing continues to be an issue that was brought up both in 1979, subsequent amendments, and in this plan, along with water quality and quantity, that seemed to be another prominent issue. Some of the issues that were also raised related to Camp Reilia and impacts and conflicts between neighboring residential neighborhoods, some of which may have been there prior to the establishment of the camp. The plan represents the recommendations of the committee, and we are representing it and presenting it to you today for a recommendation of approval to the Board of Commissioners. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Director Hendrickson. Do any of the commissioners have any initial comments or questions from staff before we take public testimony? Commissioner Farrar?
I have a general question regarding how these six plans interrelate with the overall comp plan. My understanding is that this planning commission took on the primary role of looking from a perspective of countywide and the 18 goals, statewide goals that pertain to Clatsup County. And then each of these plan areas had a group of people that tried to represent their communities for these plans, and I'm just wondering, I can't recall what the complete document looks like, the complete comp plan. Are these sections within that plan, and is there some introductory material at the very beginning of the overall comp plan that makes this clear what the hierarchy is of these, where these community plans may take precedent over what's in the overall countywide 18 goals? Or how that works? Is that explained up front in the document?
Staff has not prepared an introductory statement yet for the overall comprehensive plan. The way that it would work is the main comprehensive plan that consists of the 18 goals covers all of the unincorporated areas at the same level. Those regulations are the, and policies are the same for every community throughout the unincorporated area. Where the main plan is silent or perhaps a bit more lenient, some of the community plans have proposed policies that might be more tailored to their particular area, and that might supersede a general policy moving forward if something is more specifically addressed in an individual community plan. But to date, staff has not prepared that overview, and it's not something that we've brought to the Planning Commission for review.
A follow-up to that, so I just noticed like that we have a lot of definitions in each individual plan that are the same, so it's pretty repetitive, but is that because they're meant to stand alone as well as be part of this larger document?
That's correct. Each plan will stand alone, and when we do have applications in a particular area, those applications are reviewed against both the large overarching comprehensive plan as well as the applicable policies in the relevant community plan.
Commissioner Powers?
Yeah, just to be clear, my understanding of the hierarchy, if there is a conflict between the local community plan and the county plant, community plan, or the comprehensive plan covering the 18 goals, the hierarchy states that the higher plan rules? Takes precedent?
Yeah, so we strive not to have conflicts because we do want everything to be unified. We don't want the main plan saying we need to build more housing, and then a separate community plan saying, well, that's fine, but don't build it in our region. We want the plans to mesh together. So typically, what we might find is we have some general policies, for example, in Goal Six, which is air, water, and land resources quality, that may talk about the need for clean water, some general steps that may be taken to arrive at the goal of maintaining clean drinking water for the community. But for example, in the Clatsup Plains Community Plan, there may be more specific measures taken, and I'm not saying these are actual policies, but for example, you know, the Clatsup Plains Community Plan may say that, you know, septic tanks all have to be of a certain type in order to avoid polluting the lakes or the aquifer, or additional steps may need to be taken to protect the aquifer. And so in that case, those more specific policies would be the ones that would, we would review. It has to be consistent with all of them, so it has to be consistent when providing clean drinking water, but if there's more specific policies in a community plan, those would be applicable as well. But there really shouldn't be conflicts between the two documents. They should mesh together as one unit. This is just a deeper dive into the general policies in the main plan.
Any final questions? Okay, let's go ahead and move on to public testimony. This hearing is open for public testimony. All speakers from the floor are to state their name and address before speaking, and if you're appearing as a representative, identify who you represent. We ask that you limit your remarks to about two minutes in order to prevent, in order to permit everyone the time to speak, but also to get through this big agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on the Clatsup Plains Community Plan? Doesn't look like we have anyone from that community group here, except I don't know who E N G is, but what else you would like to speak on this plan? Hearing none. Public testimony is now closed, and discussion is open for Planning Commission members. So I'd like to point out the pages here, so if you want to follow along, so the packet number is page four of a, I think, 356-page packet. That's when the memo begins, and you'll see on page five that we have our actions here, thanks to staff. Our task today is to review the Clatsup Plains Community Plan Draft Five, identify any questions or concerns that we might have, and then provide a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, including any recommended amendments if we have them. And then we have two suggested motions there, so one is just suggesting that we pass on this community plan, recommend it to the, for adoption to the board, and the other would be if we had any proposed amendments. So that's on page five, and then the actual plan starts on page six. And since this is our first one, I might just invite any discussion or questions from the commissioners about like, you know, if we have any more about the, kind of the package, the way that it's worked in the process and the outcome, like as a whole, and then we can move into the document for specifics. Director Hendrickson?
Thank you. I did forget to point out to the board that not only are six community plans, but also each of the 18 goals that you've reviewed to date were sent to County Legal Land Use Council on March 7th for review. We've had some comments back from them on some of the main goals, but they have not yet completed their review of the community plan, so I did want to point that out as well.
And so the process might be that we recommend them pending legal review, and that staff integrates those legal comments, and then it goes as a package directly to the commission, but it doesn't come back to us.
Correct. That would be a good motion to make. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Farrar?
I had a couple of general comments that apply to all six of these plans, and I kind of don't want to have to repeat this for each plan, but maybe that's necessary as a procedural requirement to consider them as amendments. But let me just say that in general, I find the plans, all of them that I read, and I must admit, I only went through four of these so far. I could not get through the last two in the few days I had to allot to this, and I spent a lot of time on the introductory material, which maybe I shouldn't have, but in a way, I'm glad I did because I find that all these plans that I looked at need to have a very careful review, and I should precede this by saying, I really do appreciate how many hours and how much really genuine effort went into making these plans, putting them together, making them sound, and getting the job done right. I understand that. I think all of us have had a huge load to carry, but the planning staff, the community development department staff especially, with the number of meetings, the number of comments, the number of revisions and everything that went into it, it's a nodding task, and I recognize that. And nothing's perfect, but I do find in reading through these that there still are minor errors that though cumulatively make it not quite in shape for the stamp of the county to be on them as final. And specific examples of that would be misspellings, which spell check won't find because you can have the wrong word in there and spell check won't see it. And I've, I don't think there should be misspellings in there. I don't think there should be the incorrect word in places where a different word was intended. I don't think that the figure numbers and table numbers in the text should be inconsistent with the actual table or figure that's presented in the document. And so, yeah, I'm picky, and I'm sorry, but this document needs to be very accurate, very exact, from my point of view, and again, I'll say that especially Director Hendrickson has put in countless hours on this and has depended on many others, myself included. I could have done much better at presenting the thoughts and comments I had on catching errors and revisions, but I have a limited capacity to type, and I'm a slow reader, and I did what I could, but I could have done a lot more, and I think all of the members of the staff have worked very hard to make this right, but I wish that before this is finalized by the County Board of Commissioners, that some small group of people could go through page by page and correct these minor discrepancies, so that the document is really in great shape. And there's bound to be little small glitches even after that, but there still are just enough here that I feel like because we've done this piecemeal over a long period of time, sometimes you need to go back and start at page one and just work your way through. I know it's a horrible task to put on anybody's shoulders, but I've got to say that because I want it on the record that I think it needs a very close editing, and I know I'm going on and on about this, and that's the nature of editing. It's detailed, and again, I'll say, the plans overall, they're great. They cover all kinds of important things, and people really worked hard to get it right, and some people are better at wording things than others, and so we have a mixed bag in here, but I just hope that somehow we can clean it up a little bit, and then as a geologist by profession, I've got to say some things about the maps, and my disappointment in overall in the quality of the figures and maps presented throughout. They're often illegible, and I don't know if that's just the nature of the copy that as it gets printed on the particular printer that develops these packets, but when I look at it on my own screen on on the computer, I still see that they're fuzzy images, there are in many cases figures that are maps of an area that don't fully show the area, and I don't understand why each community plan can't begin with a Figure One map showing area of Clatsup Plains and showing the entire thing, not cutting off the southern part as the map does right now. It doesn't even show the southern part. Maybe it does somewhere else, but what I'm looking at to review is what I'm thinking is the actual plan. The plans don't make boundaries clear. The plans don't show enough roads often to make it really obvious of where we are geographically in our county. Just showing Highway 202 in the Elsie Jewel area would be nice. It would be helpful. Showing the community of Jewel would be nice. It would be helpful to show the area. Making the names few but distinct on maps makes it easier for people to recognize the region we're talking about, and when specific things are mentioned in the text, those should show somewhere on a map. So a particular stream or river should have the name big enough to easily see, and not a lot of superfluous little streams that don't have names, and they just clutter a map. So the map shouldn't be cluttered. They should be distinct. The colors should be in strong contrast where one can see the different types of areas, the different types of parks, the different types of of landforms. And there should be a key that matches with that very well, and if you need to add some patterns to some of the colors, then do that to make it distinct.
Commissioner Farrar, can I make a suggestion? These are all really great comments. Thank you. So on your first point about editing, let's all take responsibility that if we see errors, that we try to just shoot an email to Director Hendrickson so that they can correct those Scrivener errors over time. And also, let's just give Director Hendrickson an opportunity to respond, you know, Director Hendrickson, do you expect you'll do like, do you have like the best editor on your staff that runs through the whole document before it goes to the Board of Commissioners, just one last time to make sure most of those Scrivners errors are corrected?
Yes, we will read through the plans again and the goals to make sure that we catch as many errors as we can. I cannot guarantee absolute perfection, but we will strive to maintain the highest quality that we can achieve. I do appreciate Commissioner Farrar's comments, especially the feedback about the maps. Some of the maps I know in the plans that I personally worked on are still being worked on in our GIS system, so some of the very, very old ones from the 79 plan are not going to be included, but I do appreciate those comments. Thank you.
Yeah, and so that was my second, my second thing was that, you know, we can, so today, for example, if you'd like to see a planning area map right up front, let's recommend that as an amendment, if that, if everybody agrees to that as we walk through. And then if you have, it seems to me like those maps, you know, if there are specific ones that you have suggestions on, maybe you could communicate that directly with staff. I'm just worried about time today because we have, of course, six of these plans to get through, so I appreciate the overreaching, overarching constructive criticism, but I'm like, you know, let's talk about him as we get through, go through the plan, and then also just have those direct conversations, and I feel like outside of this recommendation, probably there's some wiggle room. We could give some sort of recommendation that staff considers changes for these, of these maps before the next, and then empower them to work with maybe you if there's specific ones that you have concerns about, if that makes sense.
Yes, and that makes sense, and as I say, I am trying to be constructive, and I do value all the time that had gone by many people into this, and I want it to then be polished and golden because of so much time. I don't want it to be diminished by a little bit of tarnish here and there to get poetic about it, but I will go back to my general point is that I didn't want to have to say this about each plan and go through each one. I do, I do feel there are certain things that could be included upfront in each plan, and I understand each plan is kind of individualized for the area, and so the people that put them together had their perspective, and I don't want to take away from that, but I think there's some upfront material that would really set the stage and make it helpful to people outside of that particular community to understand such things as are included in the cover sort of memo that Director Hendrickson has attached to the front of each plan where it gives the size of the area, for example, just the acreage and maybe square miles as well, and the population. I found the one that was written, I think it was for the 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 Lewis and Clark, the Elkhaw area, it's called, the Lewis and Clark only Woloski area. I thought that intro paragraph in there that talked about the population change between 1970 and 2021, if we, if, or 2020, if we had that for each area, it kind of gives somebody an overview of, hey, this is what that area is like. It's this part of the county. It has this much of the population. I found that really helpful to put it into context, and I just think if there was a page that was sort of similar in each one of those plans that just was a paragraph like some of the material that Director Henderson puts in those cover memos for them, it would really be helpful. And then one final thing on the maps that would be useful to, I think, all the areas that used this idea of the landscape units, and they would show a landscape unit diagram in most of them. One of them, and I can't remember which one it was, I think it may also have been the Elsie Jewel one, looked a little more finished. It had some colors in it, and it made it easy to see where are the alluvial terraces, where are the highlands, and those kind of things. It was really helpful to set that out, and if those could be up front in a consistent way where you know that Figure One and Figure Two are going to be these things, and that's where you can look to get an overview, that would really be helpful, and I'll end it with that because I know I'm blabbing on and on, but I just really want these to be as valuable as they really are, and just need a little, just a little bit of tweaking to make them near perfect.
Thank you, Director Hendrickson.
Yeah, and just to maybe take a little pressure off the Planning Commission, we do have a second meeting set aside if we need it for June 28th. We were, we did reserve that date for an extra meeting. That makes you breathe a little bit easier about having to work through the material over the course of today and possibly in a couple of weeks.
Thank you. That was a question I had. Other commissioners, do you have any kind of like overreaching questions or comments you want to make at the Other Commissioners, do you have any kind of like overreaching questions or comments you want to make at this time? Commissioner Powers. I don't hear you. Commissioner Powers, I think you might be on mute. Could you unmute yourself?
Yeah, I know.
Sorry.
And also, and it may just be me, but I read a lot of acronyms and I go through a document and then I forget what the acronym meant. And then I tried to go back to find the definition or the spelling out of the acronym. If possible, could you put it in an appendix or someplace that just lists all the acronyms in the particular document? And so that I can go, I don't remember what sin is. Oh, Cherokee Indian Nation, sorry. Chinook Indian Nation. Oh yeah, that's what that means. I'm just an old man with dementia and I need help. Thank you.
Thank you. So I did make it through all of them over like four hours yesterday. I, I will say like generally, I think it's too much to have this much material in one meeting. And so I know that we're, gosh, this process has been a long painful one. And we're trying to get to this particular date, but I do, I, I think if you're going to do in the future, it'd be great to just split it up into two meetings from the start so that we don't have as many materials to have to read so that we don't get to the place where someone like Commissioner Farr can't get through it because he has so much to offer. But one thing, it's a lot of, it's, they're very long. I don't know if they have to be quite so long, but that they are what, they are what they are. And I really appreciate all the time that all the volunteers put into these documents. I know it was sometimes a process that was, you know, there was some conflict within the committees and with, within some of the public and, and so it, it can sometimes feel like a real thankless task, but I think the outcome is a testament to all the work that was put into it. And as someone who's lived in Clatsup County for 20 years, what strikes me is that each of these communities is really distinct. And I didn't, I didn't know a lot that I read in these documents. And so they're really valuable. I think for all of us to read a better understanding of the history and the landscape and really the distinct cultures of each of these communities as a result. And, and then I really value the suggested policies that come from those people as well. I don't feel like I have the expertise by any means or the love or the dedication or the history to make, you know, rules around the class of planes, planes, for example, because it's just not my, it's not my place, right? So my place is the Southwest. It's what I know the most about. And so anyway, I just really appreciate all that, that the time people put in and the knowledge that people have and really the heart that they put into this. And, and in this case, I see, you know, this list of people that I and oh, and I just want to say too, like each of them is very different. And at first I was kind of put off by that. I know there were different staff on different committees and that is part of it. But the other part is just like the way that those committees wanted to put them together and you know, I'm a very, I'm ethnically German. And so I'm very like, you know, particular about things. I'm an editor also and but what I came to realize is that also reflects the differences amongst our community members. And so I'm glad that they look different. They should look different. So, yeah, so that's kind of what I have to say over the overreaching thing. I found a few typos, but I thought overall like they're great. They're full of amazing information. They're way better than what we had before. And, and we have opportunities in five to seven years to refine them, to keep improving them over time. So we shouldn't think of them as static documents that is, are going to be there, thank God, for another forty years. But instead there'll be something that'll, there's opportunities for improvements over time as, as it should be. And so I specifically for this one, I'd like to thank the Clatsup Plains Citizen Advisory Committee, Mary Chemis, Devin and Dawn Abing, Diane Heights, Philip Johnson, Jerry Myers, Maria Pincetich and Robert Strickland, who of course was a former member of the Planning Commission. I know all those people. You know, spent a lot of time and effort in this plan. So thank you to them. Any other overreaching comments? And then I'm going to like start, we're going to start walking through.
Okay. Yeah, this is Commissioner Quan. So I'm wondering then with that, can we set a goal today of maybe going to, I don't know, two, maybe three, instead of trying to go to everything. I think we need really the time to really specifically go to these details and each plan rather than trying to push and going to it all.
I think we should see how we do. So let's see, I mean, it may be that we don't have a ton of specific comments for each one, but maybe we do. So let's see how it goes. You know, as we, it's a big commitment to be on the Planning Commission. And I apologize for that, but here we are at the end of it. So I was, I did set aside again, ten to three today with a half an hour lunch around twelve thirty. And if we need a break, we can also take a break. But if people, also if people haven't made it through all the documents and you can be upfront about that, I think that's okay as volunteers. If we feel like we do want to say like we made it through three, we, we have read of those all and we're doing good work and we don't feel comfortable moving on because of the lack of knowledge on those other documents. I think we should, we can talk about that as we get through the agenda. Does that make sense? Or do you want to talk upfront?
I think, I think that's fine. Let's, let's go ahead and go through it and we'll see where we get, how, how far we get.
Okay. I had a question from the audience that like when that next date is and it's, so what we did is we've set aside the date that used to be the countywide and Planning Commission joint meeting that no longer exists. And we set aside that for an additional meeting if we need it. So it would be Tuesday, June twenty eighth starting at ten AM. Okay. All right. Let's walk through then. So I'm, I'm on page nine. We've got a table of contents. And then we have you know, kind of the introduction, the overall goal for the Clatsap Plains and the local history. Then we talk about current issues and concerns. And when I was listening to Commissioner Farrar, I, I heard him as potentially interested in making a motion around adding a short section that integrates basic information about the planning area. So, you know, population, et cetera, and then maybe a map in that next to local history, if that makes sense. Is that is that your suggestion, Commissioner Farr?
Yes, that, that is my suggestion. It'd be right, it'd be the, it'd be in the introduction, probably at the very beginning to just say where the land lies within the county and something about its aerial extent in terms of, I would give both acres and square miles. It's done for a couple of the areas and I imagine GIS can pick that off pretty quickly. And, and then just a a map that shows it that could be really a, you know, a very simple map of the county and just showing the location that you can actually pull something like it off of web maps. Maybe add a couple of specific points within the area to show.
So I'm hearing a motion to add a section between local history and current issues and concerns, including basic information like location, size, population, as well as a map of the planning area. Sound right? Do we have a second for that motion? Oh, I see. It's like really tiny for me.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, Commissioner Powers, seconds. So I'm like, my screen, it's like so tiny. Sir, wave you, Director Henrickson, making that like a little bigger on the screen. Yeah, there we go. Okay, good. Thank you. Now it's just tiny, tiny, but not indistinguishable. Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Can we do, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay. Anything else from the introduction? The next section is current issues and concerns.
What page are you on?
So I'm on page twenty two. But we could go back if you still, if you had specific things you wanted to talk about, Commissioner Farrar. I know I'm zooming through.
No, I'll send my little nitpicky comments separately and staff can look at them and decide what they want to. Whether they want to take them seriously or not. That, that sounds reasonable to me.
So any Scribner's errors for sure, but if there's anything substantive that you want to change, we should definitely do that here.
You, you know, one thing that's, that's, that's kind of overall to this particular plan that, that I noticed. And it's what got me thinking about showing the planning area very definitely on the map. It, it was at times quite unclear to me whether this community plan was, was trying to include Fort Stevens in its area, clearly in the map that's depicted on web maps. That's, that's a state park and it's not part of the planning area. And it seemed like there was another mention in there that that seemed unclear whether the plan really applied to it or not. I guess it had to do with making it distinct that the cities aren't included in these plan areas. Is that not correct? That, that seaside is, is a notch in the planning area. It's not part of the area. And I think it, it may be stated in there and I just blew past it, but I think that point needs to be, you know, emphasized that the plan areas within this boundary and it's, it's, there may be stuff adjacent that's relevant, but this plan can't really take up and influence what goes on in those, those particular areas.
Dr. Hendrickson, could you just describe the planning area so that we know what actually is included and how, what the approach is around the cities, please?
Yeah, the plan, just like our overall comprehensive plan does not apply to the incorporated areas or to lands within the urban growth boundaries. There was discussion at the Clatsap Plains Citizen Advisory Committee about whether or not to include Fort Stevens. And I, if I recall correctly, I believe their recommendation was to include it. If you look at the nineteen seventy nine plan and those maps, it was included. And I think at some point when Hammond became part of Warrenton, I think that there was a change made. But we still have policies in our plans about working with Fort Stevens, about helping them implement their master plan, which we did adopt as a county, I believe in two thousand one. So I think including it in the Clatsap Plains as recommended by the Citizen Advisory Committee from that planning area is the ultimate intent.
Thank you. Commissioner Powers. Check your mute there. Commissioner Powers, sorry, I can't hear you.
Yeah, my apologies. I need to go away, I guess. Page nine, current issues, the first paragraph, housing, the last sentence. And I notice this a lot through all the plans where it says, review and revision of this program is strongly recommended within the next. And there's a lot of places in plans where they're recommending stuff outside of the policies and objectives. So I guess it's just more of an educational question for me is do you react to the, in the basis and the body of the document with a recommendation? Or do you only react to those that are in the policies and objectives and goals?
Yeah, as staff, we review against the goals, objectives and policies. So we don't typically pull items out of the narrative. And I was just looking to see if we did include that as a policy, because we do, we do recommend that and it should probably be a policy in here.
Which one are we looking at right now? I see page nine.
The last, first paragraph, last sentence.
This, yeah, this relates to the transfer density program, I believe. And so it's a program that's been in place or were changes to it over the years. And I think that it's in a state right now where it's frankly, we don't have a good handle on what's been approved for transfer. Because at one point, the tables were removed from the zoning code in the standards document and were just kept internally in-house. And I think at some point we may have lost the thread of what, what's been approved and what hasn't. The other concern obviously is carrying capacity of the land and the water issues that we, everyone has concerns about in the Clatsap Plains area. So my suggestion for the Planning Commission would be when we get to the housing policies that are in the plan, which I'm not finding, that you may want to add that as, as a policy to the plan.
I think.
So for our reading enjoyment as we go forward, then maybe we ought to look when we hit the body and we hit a recommendation is try to map it to one of the goals or objectives. Make sure it's there, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
So those start on page sixty six of the packet, which is fifty three of the document, but so they have kind of like an overreaching general development. It's hard too, because they're broken into these landscape units, which, you know, so it's not so easy sometimes. But okay, I think we should, as, as Director Henrickson said, I'm going to get lost here at the end. So let's just keep going from the beginning before we lose that. So any other, so current issues. I think, well, Commissioner Johnson for sure and Commissioner Powers are probably closer, closest to this area. If you have any comments on the the background report, this is a great time to make them or suggested changes. But if not, we can just move our way down to the policies, which really, you know, is the most affecting section of the document. And theoretically may translate into ordinances down the line. I, I forgot to say earlier, when I was talking about the overview, just, I was interested in climate change. That's my thing. And, but also in, yeah, like emergency preparedness and climate change were two things that I feel like you know, are big changes to the larger plan. And so it was interesting to see how each group, you know, did or didn't integrate some of that into these, these local plans as well. And this is certainly an area that sea level rise and saltwater intrusion into groundwater will, will be an issue. And then of course tsunami impacts will also be an issue over time. And earthquakes, but the earthquakes is kind of like countywide, everyone, everyone's basically two weeks on your own. Everybody in some of them said, and just like specifically in the, in the policies, everyone should be ready. Two weeks on your own. Commissioner Farr.
Yeah, on that point of two weeks, I, I think it should be changed to a month, but that's a minor point. I, I had one specific detail on this and I'm, I do kind of focus on a lot of figures and maps and things like that often. And there's figure one for this area. Plan shows Camp Realea current observation wells. And so my question, well, for one thing, Camp Realea, a boundary around the area that makes up Camp Realea on that map would be very helpful. I wasn't sure what the double dashed line represents, kind of running through the middle of the map. But the four observation wells shown, I was curious if, if, if those are for water quality or looking for some kind of impact to the groundwater of plume tracking, or if impact to the groundwater of plume tracking, or if therefore quantity, I think it would be important to distinguish just with a word or two in this inappropriate sentence there where they're mentioned, whether they're for quality or actually tracking the the condition of the aquifer in terms of supply.
Chair Gardner, you're muted.
Oh, I was talking to you. Sorry, I was just saying that the whole beige is is Camp Realea in that map. And he was asking about the those wells. And I was wondering if you have any details that you could share on those wells.
Yeah, I would have to go back and look at the Resources Department webpage where I pulled that information. It's been too many months and I don't remember.
All right, Commissioner Farrar, we're going to just move forward through this document. Do you have pages you wanted to jump to if you have any substantive comments in the narrative? Or other commissioners? I do not.
Well, again, I will try to actually write these up and send them in to staff for them to think about whether it's worth addressing or not. But one example of a point I mean, where I'm kind of left wondering is is on packet page twenty-five or page twelve of the actual plan, that's a plane's plan. And it's talking about well, I, I think I understand what tier one refers to up there in bold, but it's not defined and it seems out of place. So I would just simply strike that as is not relevant to this document, but it's talking about the the plan to in the strategic plan of the county commissioners to study water resources in the Class of Plain area and after the number two there, if you go to the next paragraph, it says this work is currently ongoing and to date, no moratorium has been issued, et cetera, et cetera. Actually, I don't think that's accurate, that the work is going on to assess and analyze groundwater quality and quantity in the area. There is some work being done about water resources in the county, but it's not directed at an actual assessment of either quality or quantity. It's it's more an overview of what's known about water and how water is being used within the county, but it's it's not specifically addressing supply in terms of the amount or the characteristics of the quality of the water. So I don't think it's appropriate that to word that quite the way it is there. It's it's better to say that it's been considered that maybe such a study should be done, but nothing's been set yet for something to that effect. Anyway.
I think maybe maybe something simple would be no more tram has been issued for development in Class of Plains and unless Director Henderson, do you expect that that work will be done, an assessment that would result in a moratorium or not?
So the county right now is working with the Association of Oregon Counties on a water survey or community forum, which is what Commissioner Farrar has described. And I believe that he's been at several of those meetings. But it is really just a discussion about who uses water, what do we use water for, and what do we know about water? Depending on the outcome of that work, there there may be future work moving forward that may involve actual scientific studies related to quantity and quality of water, but I don't know that for certain. And I would suspect there would not be a moratorium in the near future.
Can we leave that, Commissioner Farrar? Or do you want to actually make a motion?
No, no, I I'd just move on. I just think that that could be just tweaked a little bit to to not leave the impression that there's some kind of groundwater assessment being done in that area at this time.
And I've, I have made a note to clarify that.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. That's that's great. Moving quickly to another point that that just for my own curiosity with Camp Realea, I'm kind of unfamiliar with that place. And I just thought it might be helpful upfront. I think elsewhere in the document, there may be a an allusion to it, but how many people actually occupy that as a full-time residents? Are there are there resident people on that property? Or is it people that go there for certain hours or days of the week and that it's a rotating thing? It was unclear to me whether it's like a little community, a little town there or not.
Yes, and I don't know the answer to that, Commissioner.
I think I might make a contribution there. It's nothing but a commuting site. There are no houses, there are no barracks, except when there is some sort of weekend National Guard or possibly some state police come out to use a firing range, they do it for more than one day. But there is no full-time on post resident, if that answers your question.
That does, and I appreciate it. And it might just be briefly noted there that that's that's the case, because one might assume, oh, maybe there's hundreds of soldiers out there that are consuming water and you know, needing groceries and all that kind of, I don't know.
No, they definitely consume on the weekends when they're in the barracks. Or they form up at the convoys and leave Camp Realea to go somewhere for whatever deployment they want to use.
Thank you.
Yeah, just because someone's here part-time doesn't mean they don't use all the resources that we use. I can say that for somebody who lives right next to the place that is Sandcastle Weekend, thirty thousand visitors. Okay, so that's page fifteen. So suggestion just to just to clarify that Camp Realea, the that has, no one's resident there, but has visiting groups and sometimes large numbers, I think. Um, okay, moving on, future trends, housing, beach accretion and erosion, traffic. Yes, Commissioner Farrar.
Hate to keep jumping in with these nagging questions, but with respect to beach accretion, which has amounted to quite a bit of acreage along the shore of this county over time, I'm not sure what the current rate is, but my question is who owns that land that gets accreted? Is that immediately state land or does it accrue to the adjacent property owner at the time? How does that work? And is it worth maybe putting in a sentence that just clarifies that?
Director Henderson, do you know that? I
Do not know the answer. I've made a note to that we should research it and we can add some language to this section.
So my experience with that is it depends on the area, like in some areas they have like court court lines, like they've gone through some sort of like a process that has actually made a like a specific survey line that just ends private property. And then in other places, because of the way that legal descriptions have been written, it actually comes and goes depending on where the vegetation line is. And so like you, your property may grow. So and then, of course, below the vegetation line, it's the jurisdiction of state parks. So but there's always a lot of conflict over those changes, depending on whether people are interested in beach grading, for example, big thing down in South County, so try to retain views. Traffic, Highway one oh one, I got an offender vendor in this area recently because of one of those really dangerous turns. Nobody was hurt. But I appreciate that this is noted here. Yeah, Commissioner Farrar.
There's tables similar to the one shown here about vehicle use in their average annual daily trips or something. Is that what a A D T is? There's there's one of Commissioner Powers acronyms. I'm sure he'll be able to explain to me what that one is. These tables, this was sort of an ex parte contact I had with Susannah Gladwin, who is one of the members of the Citizen Advisory Committee for the Elsie Jewel area, and she was referring to a similar table in that plan and lamenting that these figures being averages really sort of don't give a very complete picture of what traffic's like, that that we know from living here, how much the traffic increases in the summer for some event compared to, you know, an off day. And I guess she was thinking and I agreed that it'd be great to see a range, but I imagine that data is really, you know, difficult to assemble and and capture. So instead of that, maybe and maybe it's even stated here, I'm not sure, but that that these figures are just averages and sometimes those those daily trip numbers go way up for the Sandcastle event or the coast to the hood to coast race and all those things that happen. And because I think these average figures greatly under they they tend to make one think that the traffic's much lighter than than it is. We remember the dense traffic jams and don't remember the quick trips that we made somewhere when when traffic was was really low. So anyway, it's sort of a comment, sort of a thought on maybe just adding a note to recognize the limitation of such numbers.
I do appreciate too that they noted why it went down in twenty twenty was because of COVID. It wasn't that it was actually decreasing over time. But it is a little strange when you look at it, you're like, why? And also just being over three years rather than showing over ten years, how much the growth of Seattle and Portland in particular has increased our twenty-six and one oh one and thirty traffic. Okay, moving on. Aquifer agriculture. Oh, another thing that I did not mention earlier was just my appreciation for the tribal elements to some of these plans and just the participation of the Chinook tribe in particular. I hope that the Class of Nahalum were also given an opportunity to look if they had the capacity as well, but I appreciate those elements to this plan in particular.
Just just quickly, I was going to suggest in the heading there, aquifer and carrying capacity land to change aquifer to water resources, because the the surface water component is is important also and the aquifer refers strictly to groundwater. The two are very closely tied. And in fact, I'm going to send as one of my written comments to staff, a potential sentence to add information that the groundwater and surface water are very closely interconnected in this area and blah, 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 but I'll do that separate from this meeting.
Is that one you would feel like you need a motion for, Director Hendrickson? If would you feel comfortable just changing that title to be water resources? Or do you think we need to have a motion on that?
Yeah, I think if the Planning Commission is in agreement with that change, I'm fine with just doing it as a Scribners.
Anybody opposed to that? Okay. Wildlife habitat, there's quite a bit of attention paid to elk in this area, which are an important species, but not a listed species. So the the listed species in this area would be might be snowy plover Fort Stevens. But of course, a lot of pension being paid to elk, as it should be. And silver spot butterfly. Is there any mention of silver spot butterfly in this? Because actually that came up when we talked about the Gearheart Firehouse. And I know there are restoration sites here. I would I I mean, I would suggest that we should at least acknowledge the presence of those listed species as important, but also issues with development over time. What do you guys think?
I I agree. I I do have some vague recollection of having read somewhere in one of these documents the name silver spot butterfly, but I don't know if it's maybe one of the references cited toward the end. I don't see it.
Yeah, I'm not seeing it either when I do a search on the silver spot, so.
Yeah, maybe under wildlife habitat, just a short other listed species paragraph. I think that would be good. But it's not in the policies, so I don't know if we you know, without, I wish that we had more people from that committee with us today to talk about that, but I'm okay, but that's not a Scribner's change. That's more substantive. So I think we should make a motion if we want to do that. Does that sound right, Director Hendrickson?
I think this would be my preference for updating the narrative, which is not quite the same as a policy. I think if you just want to give direction to staff, for example, to add in a list of listed species, that's fine. I think though, on the policies, that's where we should definitely have a motion.
Easier, thank you. Okay, back to future trends. Let's see tourism, aquaculture, agriculture. It's not much discussion about agriculture, of course. Out here, it's mostly grazing land. Those cute baby sheep and others. Wildlife habitat. Then we're on to landscape units. Hi, Commissioner Huang, you put yourself on camera. Did you have something to add?
No, sorry. Yeah, my my phone goes in and out. I had to have to leave and come back.
Yeah, no, good. Well, welcome. Good. All right, Commissioner Farrar, you're up again.
Okay, this, this is where I would suggest, I I think this plan didn't really have the landscape units map. Maybe maybe it does, but this is where I'd like to see those, I think they have four different categories or you know, they have the shoreline areas. This this plan may not have spelled them out like the others did, where they have the the shoreline areas, the livial areas, the the uplands, the highlands, the outcrop areas. Well, yeah, there in that paragraph near the bottom, they talk about it and the uplands, the highlands, the, the salt outcrop areas. Well, yeah, there in that paragraph near the bottom, they talk about it and, um, okay, so you have it in there. I think my issue with this was that it was just really hard to distinguish the units because of the choice of sort of pastel colors there. What, let's see that on page, um, I'm not seeing that one. What, what page was that map on, uh, Director Henrickson?
Yeah, I may have not put it in. So we did have a draft of it.
Oh.
Get it to open, but I guess maybe I did not put it in, um. And now my computer is frozen.
Yeah, I think it'd be helpful to have that map for each, each one of these because I think all the areas talk about how they, um, that that's the, the approach taken is to consider the landscape units and, and then what activities are good to do on those and which ones maybe aren't so good to do.
Yeah, but I will be sure. We do have that map and I'll make sure that it gets included.
Okay, thank you.
Any more in the narrative, Commissioner Farrar, or others? Mine crashed too. So we have the natural resources and then natural hazard areas, which I appreciate. If Pat Corkin was here, he would have lots to say. And then we've got some nice big maps for that section. I just wanted to note under the tsunami on page 32, just to, just for staff's benefit and others that, um, you know, in the sixties, we had a big tsunami in Klaasik County and it was devastating, um, to Cannon Beach. Um, I'm not sure about seaside, but, um, my friends were in high school at the time. They're now in their seventies. And they're all drinking beer on the beach and they got in their cars because they ran out of beer and they drove back. And by the time they hit town, the town was completely underwater and the beach they were sitting at. So they would actually died if they had continued to be at the beach. And so we were very lucky to like not lose lives, but you know, there's an entire section in Cannon Beach that was knocked out and the bridge was knocked out and downtown was completely underwater. You could canoe through downtown. And that's when they built the dike, um, along downtown Cannon Beach, um, and developed a lot of flood infrastructure, but they are rare, but they, you know, that was like the first time that we actually had significant, um, losses. And, you know, just a corner of the county, but next time it will be a lot worse. Cause there's a lot more people now. Okay, housing. I like that so many of these plans really spent a lot of time on this. And they talk specifically about, you know, new subdivisions in the area. And I'll point out, I think this is the area where we've had, really had a lot of growth, but, um, you know, a lot of the housing is not for residents. Yeah.
Jumping back one page though to that, that map, I was trying to figure out what page it was, but geologic hazards map is, oh, okay, so what you're showing there on the screen does have an explanation. It's at, at the bottom. And the, the printout that I'm looking at here didn't have that, so I was kind of confused. Wait a minute, that's actually a different map than I'm looking at. I'm looking at the one on the, uh, left there with the red. And there's, on the version I'm looking at, there isn't a clear explanation of what geologic hazards are being depicted and what the colors stand for. But if, if that's there on the more complete, yeah, I just don't have that bottom little bit. So it's just the version I got printed. Um, not showing it. And, uh, I, that, that's just what I wanted to ensure that, that the different colors were identified as to what they represent.
Okay, we done with that section? Housing. Public facilities and services, water systems. Schools. Fire districts. Transportation. Recreation and open space. And page 61, community development. And that brings us to the goals, objectives and policies. Commissioner Farrar, do you have any more comments you wanna make before we move on to those? I know you're list.
Just, just general comments and I, I can't say for sure whether this particular plan had it in there or not, but when things are being discussed, such as schools and water systems and sewer systems, I, I think it'd really be helpful if in each case, there was some indication as to what the capacity of that is and, uh, I, I think the schools is especially a kind of a difficult one because, you know, co- cohorts of different um, age students are, are, are shifting. And so it, it's hard to know, but it wasn't clear to me in these, uh, smaller communities, what the capacity was to absorb uh, and properly teach more students. And, and I think that's something that is important to planning. So, um, I, I don't, you know, that's again, it's kind of a general comment, so that to any extent that that can be, uh, amplified in the document or made crystal clear what, what the circumstances are at the present time and what it looks like for the future. That might be very helpful with planning.
All right. So we're on page 66 of the packet 53 of the document. And so you have a lot of narrative. And so the, one of the questions earlier was like, does the narrative translate into the right, um, um, or, you know, do the policies reflect some of the issues that were brought out in the, um, narrative?
Well, I, I like, uh, seeing and I had flagged it here on my personal copy about number four there, the second number four. Uh, it gets at that point that I brought up earlier about Fort Stevens. I'm, I'm glad to be reminded that that's actually I guess at a, uh, it's a goal and, um, to include the Fort Stevens area in this planning thing, but, um, I wonder if it should be worded such that since it's state, state owned property, I, I, I don't think we can just unilaterally as a county decide to take it in. Or maybe we can, I don't know, but, um, it might want to word it in a way where it's, it's more like the county would like to, uh, open discussions with the state parks to, to see if it would be appropriate to include it or something to that effect.
Well, the county doesn't like have jurisdiction of, well, the private property. I mean, it's like the county has some jurisdiction over all properties, right? Whether it's state owned or private owned.
Yeah, yeah. So including it in the planning area doesn't change any of the rules that would typically apply to it. So for example, we have Camp Realea in, in the Klaasik Plains planning area. We don't carve it out, but we have limited jurisdiction over what we can control on their property. The same thing would apply to Fort Stevens, but it is kind of odd, I think, just to have Fort Stevens floating out there on its own, not part of any planning area, but
And it's outside city limits, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree that it would be great to include it in the area because it certainly impacts, uh, the transportation system and um, emergency services to some extent and, and things like that. So it seems, seems like it shouldn't be, uh, just left out there like some kind of an island in the estuary.
So they do talk in, um, general development policies under, um, C on page 67, um, maintain an overlay, overlay zone for a North Klaasik Plains subarea that prohibits increases in residential densities through zone changes and density transfers. And then there's number two also there. I don't really understand that whole program, but does staff feel comfortable with these two?
Yeah, because this is already something that's in place.
And does this line up? Sorry, does this line up? Does this line up with the discussion in the narrative around, um, whether there's a policy that, um, you know, that reflects the, the need for something around the density transfers?
So this is a little bit different. So this is, um, we already have this north cla- north Klaasik Plains subarea zone. And so we do have these specific prohibitions in there. Um, but then further down in the policies, I did go and highlight uh, where we talked about the need to review the density transfer program overall. We do have that policy in there as well, so.
Great, great, good. Uh, Commissioner Farrar?
I was wondering if Director Henrickson could, um, just somehow briefly explain what, how the density transfer thing works. Um, you're taking buildable sites from one area and in reducing what can be built there and letting them move to another areas at the idea.
Right. So, uh, when there, there are different parties involved in a density transfer. There's the sending site and the sending property owner and the receiving site and the receiving property owner. The, and part of this I'm sure is worked out between the two property owners about how compensation takes place. Then the county's not involved in the compensation piece, but what we are involved in is a sender, a willing sender will transfer the density on their property to a different property somewhere else in the county. So, eh, an example is as you're going south on 101, um, there is some property that used to be owned by Russ Earl. He may still own it. It's somewhere, I believe, south of seaside, but before the junction. And, um, for argument's sake, we'll say that it was owned R82, which would have been one unit for every two acres. So let's assume that he had four acres and would have been entitled to two units. He agrees to, um, transfer his units to the buyer. In return, he agrees to rezone his property, uh, to something that would not allow future residential development. So it could be open space parks and recreation is usually the most common thing that we've utilized. So he basically loses his two housing units on his property, but he's, um, compensated by the person who buys those two housing units on paper and then can use them, uh, on a development. So for example, the Dune Estates project that's going in right now uh, on Highway 101 on the west side. They are a beneficiary of density transfer where they can go down to one acre lots, they cluster their developments together and they can increase what they can do in terms of their housing units on their property. So that's how that works. The reason, uh, staff has recommended reviewing the program is, as I stated, it used to be that we had a table in our standards document that listed every single tra- uh, transaction that had occurred. And we were tracking it that way. At some point that table was removed from the standards document. And so we've got pieces of information here and here, but it's a little unclear how many units have been actually used, how many are still in this floating nebulous, uh, density transfer bank. Uh, and, uh, it's just i- in my, my opinion, as planning director, that it's not, it hasn't been well capped and we need to, to review it and fix it and make sure that we have a, 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 a good handle on what is still in the bank and what's been used before we can, um, really do anything more with the program. That was a very long answer. That probably didn't answer your question. Sorry.
No, that, that helped a lot. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, so we have, um, some general development policies and then we get into the landscape units. So any more, this is our, our last call really is on this, um, you know, plan, these, these policies are the most important part. Of course, we're not Klaasik Plains people, but if there's any major concerns or issues. Think a lot of this lines up with a lot of discussions we've had um, around the comp plan. Um, larger document. Moving down to, um, coastal shorelands. Talking about lakes and wetlands and culverts and mining and dredging. Unique thing about the Klaasik Plains is all the lakes and the issues with invasive plants in those lakes. And loss of riparian vegetation and beaches and dunes.
Oh, I, I do have one on this section, um, it's kind of open to discussion here. I guess, uh, there's a recommendation action on, uh, H56 of the doc of the plan. And, uh, there it is, uh, a study should be undertaken to determine a means to remove vegetation in the various lakes within Klaasik Plains and I, I had a little bit of reservation on that in that a certain amount of vegetation is, is natural for lakes to have. And so I'm wondering if it isn't really meant to uh, talk about non-native or invasive vegetation, um, that's in certain lakes, not, I don't know about various lakes, I thought specific or specified lakes. So I was going to suggest adding the words non-native or invasive after the word removed there. So it would read determine a means to remove non-native or invasive vegetation in specified lakes within Klaasik Plains. I just thought um, that hit at the problem more than the way it's written. Original.
Director Henrickson, um, do you want to reflect on the discussion of the community group around this issue? Would that be in alignment with what they were trying to do?
I don't remember that this was a specific discussion. I think this is actually a carryover from the 1979 original plan.
Interesting. Well, I will say, um, you know, this is a issue in the Long Beach Peninsula where I used to work a lot. And, um, there's a lot of rules with agencies on, on that kind of thing. So I mean, e- even if you studied, you know, uh, bombing a lake and clearing it of all vegetation, it would be very difficult to do it with the current. Uh bombing a lake and clearing it of all vegetation, it would be very difficult to do it with the current laws, but um. But I feel okay about that clarification. Do other um commissioners feel comfortable with that and do staff? I'm hearing it. I'm seeing a knotted head over Commissioner Powers. Any objections? I guess I'll send around the room here. Nobody's speaking up with objection, so if if staff wants to make that clarification, that'd be great. Um beaches and dunes. I know policy H is about um for doing grading that I was talking about earlier. Another. Unique element of this section is that there's plans around how. You can or cannot grade dunes and as they build. Gets harder and harder. Uh Commissioner Powers.
Yeah, just a comment on policy P, which is page uh fifty eight, the last policy. Based upon discussion we had at a previous commissioners meeting. Uh should that classic county territorial C be changed to Oregon?
Yes, it should. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, yeah. Okay, Fort Stevens. And uh. Bluey Lowland Policy Terraces Foothills. The Aquifer Policies.
I have one real minor clarification on that last uh. Item there, Rick. It's called Recommended Action One, bottom of page fifty nine, and it says uh. To avoid desiccation of groundwater lakes and encroachment of seawater, et cetera, et cetera. There aren't really any groundwater lakes uh other than perhaps those that are found some. Uh limestone caverns or something like that. So I was gonna suggest just putting a hyphenated. Um hyphen after groundwater and say fed, so groundwater fed lakes. I think that's what's being. Described here is that that those lakes out on the Clasit Plains, many of them. Are sort of like windows into the groundwater system, but once, once they're on the land like that, they're no longer groundwater, so. They're just lakes that are fed by groundwater.
Thank you. All right, um natural hazard policies. We're now on page sixty or seventy three. Wind and ocean shoreline erosion. Lot of unique elements here and then earthquake. Tsunami, and I know there's been one of the recent uh tsunami. Facilities, planning efforts is talked about. This is the area that how they talked about um. Vertical evacuation structures, um but we do have a question from the audience about um. Tsunami routes. And um so the page sixty one seventy four, policy D at the bottom. Catsup County shall continue to upgrade and and improve tsunami evacuation routes and. Yeah, so like if we have a route, who's responsible for it in the county land?
I think it would depend on the route, um and that would be something I need to confirm with the emergency. Uh the emergency services department.
A lot of times they're just roads, right? You're just getting.
Some of them are roads, some of them are actual trails. Uh so for example, I think there's a portion of the fort to see that's designated as. Um an evacuation route. So that would probably fall under federal government to. Uh maintain that trail. Some are just easements across people's property. Uh so that I guess I'd have to read the easement agreement that emergency services has put in place with the property owner. So it could vary from route to route. I mean, some are across logging roads, so.
Yeah. Seems like that's something needs to get worked out over time. Putting them in, but then who takes care of them? Okay, housing. Seventy five. Um. Mobile home parks is some something that's unique in this one. Um I think in seaside rural, I saw like an R RV parks was interesting in theirs. Um but this one, I know that we've had there's several uh mobile home parks. Some of them may have been challenges in the past, but they do provide um very important lower income housing to some of our residents. So this. Allows them in forest land and rural agricultural land. Is that, is that actually legal under Arizona code to allow mobile home parks in forest land?
So I'm not sure what you're reading Chair Gardner. The policy B states the location of a mobile home.
Oh, a mobile, not a park, okay.
Was that the policy you were looking at?
Yeah, yeah, that was. So. So if if a house was allowed on those properties, because not all of them allow housing, isn't that right?
Well, housing is allowed on farm and forest lands. It's just extremely difficult to do it. Um what this policy says is that you can put a mobile home on a on a piece of land. Uh even if it is a forest land or EFU land, as long as it's in conjunction with a primary use that is farm or forestry.
Um Commissioner Powers.
Yeah, uh policy C and D. All of them uh talk about things they want the county to do. So if we approve this community plan where it says the county under C shall review and if necessary revise the transfer of that C. Then the next one says within two to five years, the county should update. Would this force the county? Countywide to update both the density and the twenty nineteen? Or is this should be covered under the comprehensive plan in the county? Now, are we allowing the community plan tell the county what to do countywide?
Uh that is a very good question. I'd have to go back and see what we put in goal ten. Regarding these two issues. But.
This is the only area with the density transfer, right?
This is where we focus our density transfers, yeah.
So it might make sense to have C here, but I do agree with D unless the D was limited to this planning area. You know, so if they're saying, and it says should not shall, so should means. You know, it's suggested, but it's not required. If it says shall or must, then it is required, you know, requiring. Um. So yeah, policy D is a question for me too.
Yeah, because I see this policy D and other community plans where they use the word shell. Update the twenty nineteen study. So it's just a question on uh how's the county react to these things?
I'm not sure too, like, why do we need to update the strategy? Don't we just need to implement the strategy? I mean, it's, you know, we want to update the strategy, you know, every five to eight years or something, but it was just done. So it's not changed that dramatically since twenty nineteen. Um but the question, so we're not required as a county to do a house, a buildable lands inventory like cities are. But certainly it would be more, it would be great to have more information. Would you agree, Director Henriksen, around that that question? So that we could figure out how to better implement the strategies?
You are correct, Chair Gardner, in that um we're not required to do a housing needs analysis or a buildable lands inventory. Um I think part of the reason we may want to go back and. Look at the twenty nineteen housing strategy study is not necess. Wasn't initially to uh change the strategies, but they they may need to change, I think. From twenty nineteen to twenty twenty two and really twenty nineteen was when the report was released and we're looking at. Twenty eighteen data or maybe a little bit earlier. I think that things have changed with the pandemic and where people live, where they work, how they work. Has changed a lot about the housing market, and I think we need to look at that again. Um also, the issue of whether are the, you know, six thousand vacant units in the in the county? All short-term rentals or are they second homes? And I think there needs to be a refinement to that. Um because there's been a lot of discussion about how short-term rentals have taken away housing stock. But we know there's six thousand vacant units in the county and we know that a hundred and seventy seven of them are being used as short-term rentals. So we need to go back and kind of see what's changed over the past five years, and by the time we get to it, it could be ten years. So I think it's good to keep that updated, um but we're not required to do it. I I don't know if that answered your question.
How does the um commission feel about policy D? We could leave it as is. Or because it is a should, not a shall or a must. Or and then, you know, the, of course, the board of commissioners has the final say, so they could change it. Or we could recommend that it be. Um removed from this and considered for the main body of the text of the of the plan.
Well. I tend to make a motion on policy D that we remove it. Uh and leave it up to the board of commissioners and or the comprehensive plan to drive when this study should be done.
Uh so can I get a clarification on that? So you you're not thinking of moving it to uh. Whichever the goal number is for housing in the comp plan. But rather just totally eliminate it from any of the.
Well, I was, thank you, Commissioner Farr. I I was referring strictly to this community plan here. But if it makes sense to move it to the comprehensive plan, then yeah, I would modify my motion to mean that. I was just addressing the community plan.
Yeah, well, I I'll second that uh clarified uh motion. And and suggest that this be removed from this community plan because it seems to apply more to the county wide and it. Would be better, more uh more useful if it did apply to the entire county rather than just part of the county.
I think we do have um adopting the twenty nineteen housing strategy. In the main comp plan update. I don't think we have the housing needs analysis and building lands inventory. Um specifics, but. I think just knowing the orientation of the county around housing right now, that we could trust that the county will continue to pursue. Um the right steps in trying to solve those, answer those questions, and so we can help. Not solve the problem, but make efforts towards supporting housing for families and workers. Um Director Henriksen.
Thank you. Um yeah, so this is goal ten, our last latest draft, which is draft number four. And we did not have a policy in there about updating uh the the report that was done in twenty, released in twenty nineteen. Uh so we can certainly uh if we remove it out of the Clasit Plains Plan, we can include that in goal ten.
We didn't have it in there to adopt, so adopt versus update um.
I don't think we had in there to adopt, adopt or update, and these are the um. Policies related to the housing strategies report.
Yeah.
And it doesn't say uh update or adopt.
Huh, but we, I know we talked about it, but that's okay. Um well, uh so I hear a motion in a second. That uh we recommend the removal of housing goals and policy, policy D. And that policy be included in housing goal ten. In the appropriate location determined by staff. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the um motion passes unanimously. Thank you for catching that. Okay, um next section is sewer. Um fire, transportation. Historic area policies. Um I will say, I so we had, you know, lots of discussions about tribes and multiple tribes in our area. And so I would like to suggest that under historic area policy, A. That the tribal representation be generalized or at least added. So the Chinook Indian Nation and other tribes. Or something to that extent. To not be exclusive. I respect the participation of the Chinook in this document, but I think it's important the. Clasit Nahalum and Celest and Grand Ron and others that have some interest also be included.
I I don't know if that's a motion, if it is, I I second.
Can't, I can't, I can't make a motion as the chair. That's the tricky part, so.
Oh.
But is that okay, Director Henriksen, to include that without? I guess maybe we should look for that for this one. Let's make a motion on this one because we're making a specific change. And it could be controversial in this group, so.
So just to um. Give the planning commission just a little bit of background. We had a lot of discussion about this, especially at the countywide citizen advisory committee level. And the general term of art that was agreed to is just to replace any specific mention of tribes to. Or mention of specific tribes to um local Native American tribes. So if if the planning commission would be uh find that acceptable, we can just do the same thing here. Which is just a change that we've made throughout our documents.
I appreciate that. I just worry because of the specific um. Participation in this group that um I just wanted to give a nod to them, but. Um what do y'all think?
So uh. For Commissioner, uh excuse me, Director Harrison, so you would replace the Chinook Indian Nation and other organizations with. The local Native American tribes? Did I understand that?
Correct, that's what the um countywide citizen advisory committee recommended when we were working on the larger. Comprehensive plan and the different goals there. They did, when the reason for that is because there is a lot of um. Controversy or dissension. Where certain tribes obviously have not been recognized federally. Uh there's discussion about. Uh which tribes were in the area, and so you do have the Clasit Nahalum, you have the Chinook. It's more than I can talk to. It's it's complex.
The only one that's actually federally recognized that claims this area is the Celest. Yeah. So.
I'll go ahead and make that motion to replace. The Chinook Indian Nation and other organizations with the local Native American tribes.
I think we leave the and other organizations, right? Or, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so.
So modified.
Okay, alright, so we have a motion. Under historic area policies, policy A, the county shall work with the Clasit County Historical Society. Uh local Native American tribes and other organizations to identify and protect important local historical and archaeological sites. Et cetera. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second.
And we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Any of those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Fish and Wildlife. We have a general listed species section here, which would refer to the snowy plover and spotted butterfly, and of course, the salmon Coho and coastal Coho and the Columbia River salmon species. Page 78 at the top, I just want to note that I thought was interesting, the Colby Lake interest in fish passage. And recreational policies. Scenic areas. Under, oh, you know, on pages, at the top of page 79 staff, you have a Fish and Wildlife Areas Goal, but it's about scenic areas. So I think that's a, like a holdover or something. Open space.
I I had a question about that that one there, and it's an example. There's other places in these policies that I was wondering where it gets real specific. In the case of Policy A on this page, it shows the building height shall be limited to 18 feet on beachfront lots and 26 on adjacent properties. And I was trying to keep it clear in my head whether is that really a comp plan kind of goal policy to support a goal? Or is that getting down to the level where it becomes more of a zoning issue of what's an allowable type of building to have on a property? And I don't know if Director Henriksen can speak to that a little bit.
Yeah, I would agree that it's very specific for a comprehensive plan, but it is a carryover from the original plan, and so I didn't want to remove it. And the committee had no interest in removing it.
Yeah, well, I have no interest in removing it either, but but I did notice there were several places in the document where it seemed to kind of put a lot of detail into the plan, but that's that's fine.
I'll say in oceanfront places, it's a big deal.
Well, a question, if I may, since we're talking about that topic. So if there's an HOA on a on the ocean that has a more generous height, are they in conflict with the county? If it's 20 and 20.
Yeah.
Sorry, I meant to unmute myself, and I think I accidentally muted you, Commissioner Powers.
Yeah, to repeat, if I need to, it's just, if the HOA has a 20-foot and 28-foot restriction and not the 18 and 26, is the HOA then in conflict with the county and the CCNRs are not valid?
I would say yes, we would want to run that by our Land Use Legal Council, because our rules are the rules. What we usually find is that the HOAs are more stringent than our rules. We do not enforce the HOA's covenants and restrictions, and we don't usually review them. But I would say that if some, if the HOA was allowing buildings taller than what we would normally allow, then yes, I think they would be in violation.
Yeah, well, then I think I'll call the question in my mind, having Policy A.
I'm sorry, I keep muting you. You're you're the little box next to mine. I'm sorry.
Well, that's okay. They pick on me all the time. No, so I I I'm kind of leaning towards getting rid of Policy A as being awful restrictive in that respect. I don't think the county should be into building heights like that, but that's me.
Okay, so even if the if the Planning Commission recommends removing it, it's still in our zoning code, and it would still be effective.
Oh, so it's a zoning issue.
It is a zoning issue. This is actually in our zoning code, but usually you wouldn't find quite this much detail regarding building heights in a comprehensive plan. The more general policy would be that to provide greatest view potential, you know, like building height should be limited and or considered. This is very specific, but it is actually in our zoning code. So even if it's removed from the comprehensive plan or the community plan, it's still going to be in effect.
Yeah, I understand. So it just calls into question even more why we're repeating it twice.
Well, they kind of, the the documents feed into each other, right? So so this is a, this is an opportunity for this community group to get together and talk about what they think is important, and they work on this community plan. And then the next phase is to, you know, if there's anything new or different, to look at our zoning ordinances and to integrate. So it's just kind of, it's a more specific thing, but I think, you know, they kind of feed into each other. In this case, probably it said it in the original community plan, and that's what created it in the zoning ordinances. And now this is just re, and they're reaffirming that they still support that. That's what I would guess. I think this may be also in the Southwest Plan, or at least it's in our zoning ordinances, so.
Well, yeah, very much.
Yeah, but it has been, you know, since the 70s, like it's, it was decided a long, long time ago. Okay, open space. And again, with open space, you also have discussion of the tran, density transfer. Like policies I and J, and then the action, actions. Community development objectives, our next development, rural lands. Rural ag lands. Conservation, natural land. And that's the end. Mr. Farrar, do you have any final suggestions, comments, motions?
I will submit some written comments for people to think about if they wish to, to the to the staff, but as for what we've covered this morning on this area plan, I I would move at this point for the Planning Commission to recommend to the County Board of Commissioners to adopt the Clatsap Plains Community Plan Draft Five with the few amendments suggested this morning by Planning Commission.
All right, do we, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll I'll second that.
Okay, trying to get back to my cheat sheet here. So we have a motion in a second to recommend that the Board of Commissioners adopt the Clatsap Plains Community Plan Draft Five as amended. Any discussion? Are we ready to move on? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? We say nay. The motion is, it passes unanimously. Thanks, everyone. So it is noon, so our choices are to take our 30-minute lunch break now or to do 30 minutes, do the introduction and start working on our next one. You know what? I haven't closed the hearing yet. Let me do that first. So the public hearing is now closed. These, right, this recommendation will be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners for their approval. All right, so the question is, should we move on to the Elsie Jewel Community Plan now, or should we take our half-hour break?
I think it would be logical to break now and be able to take that next plan on in totality in one sitting.
That okay, Commissioner Huang and Johnson? And staff?
Yes, that's okay with me. I won't be able to be back after lunch, but it looks like you have a full quorum and fully capable hands. So I have to go in here, and I'll be off to Alaska shortly.
We appreciate it, Commissioner Johnson. Thanks so much for joining us.
Thanks a lot, Carrie.
See you back here, everyone, in 30 minutes. All right, welcome back to the Clatsap County Planning Commission Regular Meeting for Tuesday, June 14th, 2022. We're on our public hearing agenda item number three. After a short break. This is a legislative hearing regarding revisions to the Clatsap County Comprehensive Plan. The Elsie Jewel Community Plan. Will staff please make their report?
Yes, thank you, Chair. The Elsie Jewel Planning Area basically constitutes the southeast quadrant of the county. It encompasses approximately 178,000 acres and is the area that's basically east of Highway 53 on both the north and south sides of Highway 26 and includes Highway 103. It includes the unincorporated areas of Elsie and Jewel, and also the Fishhawk Lake Community. That's up in the very northeast part of the Elsie Jewel Planning Area. The original plan for Elsie Jewel was adopted on July 23rd, 1980 by Ordinance 80-07, and has been amended four times over the years, with the latest amendment being in 2003. And that had to do with goals related to policies and Goal 7 and Goal 18. Goal 7 being areas subject to natural hazards and disasters, and Goal 18. Ironically, I don't think this had to do with Elsie Jewel, but it was part of the amendment. But Goal 18 covers beaches and dunes, and obviously there are no beach and dune areas in the Elsie Jewel area. Just as with our Clatsap Plains Citizen Advisory Committee, the Elsie Jewel Citizen Advisory Committee met from August through December of last year. And unlike the other Citizen Advisory Committees, though, they actually did double duty, because they did not only the Elsie Jewel Community Plan, but they also worked on the Seaside Rural Community Plan. And the reason for that is because these areas are so sparsely populated. It was very difficult to form two separate committees to cover those areas. And since their issues and concerns are very similar to each other, it just made sense to combine them. By the time we completed our plan work in December, I think we were down to about three people who were regularly attending our Citizen Advisory Committee meetings. So I do want to give a shout out to Pam Birmingham, who was the chair of that committee, Susannah Gladwin, who is also the vice chair, and Donna Bing also tried to make as many meetings as he could. We also had on the committee at various times, Jodi Abeng, Connie Moore, and Herb Olstead as well. So I wanted to thank them for all their work. That really concludes my presentation. And at this point, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Director Henriksen. So just pointing to the location in the packet here, so it starts at page 85 of our packet today. We have a background report from staff and then some action items. Do we have any initial questions of staff from the Commissioners before we do our public comment today? Hearing none. The hearing is now open for public testimony. All speakers from the floor are to state their name and give their address, and let us know if you're representing anyone in your comments. And if you could limit your comments to two minutes, then it'll help us get through our agenda item here. Looks like we have Susannah Gladwin in the room, and she is, I think, raising her hand to give some public comment.
Yeah, yes. So.
Name and address.
I do. Oh, yeah, Susannah Gladwin, 82316, Highway 103, Seaside, Oregon. It's a Jewel address, Seaside Post Office. So I actually have quite a few notes. And it might take more than two minutes. If if I'm the only public, I was hoping if I go, I can either go through them really quickly, and I'll just rattle, 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 but I would like to, I think there's a sink.
I can give you a few more minutes, Susannah, if you want to just get started, and I'll I'll cut you off if I feel like we're running out of time.
So totally agree with Christopher about the mapping. And on the Jewel Plan, we had Seaside Rural Maps. They don't even show on some of the maps. Some of them do, but some of them don't show our area at all. On the special districts map, they show the fire station opposite Elderberry Inn, but not the Vine Maple, which is a very updated fire hall in Vine Maple. And another one, there's a substation in Jewel that's not on the map. The special districts map is very hard to read. It's really the, it should say that it's the fire districts mostly, and might be handy to say there are two taxing overlays for the lands on the Elsie Jewel area. One is with buildings where you have all the taxing districts that would apply, the college, Clatsap Healthcare, maybe, you know. But the forestry lands have only a few forestry-related taxable issues. Don't know how important that is. And under the water systems list, I would like the violations of water systems be dated. So going forward, when when it had violations, that we know what that period of time was. Or at least it started to, it's right now presently, I think, in violation. I have some earthquake comments, but I might get to that on a page, because over the break, I did get more pages. But I'm just going to say on the transportation on ODOT, if there is that average daily total, which Chris or somebody commented, Chris, that it's totally ineffective in planning. And if it's a day, average daily total, we should be able to see from ODOT the daily totals that there are, that they are averaging, no statistics. Because I just know Hood to Coast. One time I was going, leaving Seaside, going to Jewel, and on Highway 26, it was mostly stopped and a little bit ago, almost to the Saddle Mountain exit at one point in time on the Hood to Coast. And of course, 202 was shut down through the Elsie Jewel area and makes. Anyway, it's a problem. So, and I think it's important for planning and future permitting of events. And for, let's see, under housing, I have a question about bed and breakfasts. It is permitted on at least farm areas to have a farm table is in the plan somewhere. But what about bed and breakfast, because I'm assuming that's an owner-occupied house that is renting out a room for a short term, one, you know, a bedroom for bed and breakfast. So I think that might need to be looked at for added income for residents. Uh, it has a very strong no in the area to short-term rentals. Jewel School actually has on-school property, nine residential units for staff only because of the housing crisis in the area. They would not be able to house staff without those nine units. Oh, I want to go back to maps. The flood map, which is really the Seaside Rural Area and that needs to include Jewel, but I would love a link to the FEMA overlay maps which are on the county sites, but it would be lovely if that map could just click on a link so you could see the flood because population is along the river and the ninety-six flood really impacted our community. Um, and the Vine Maple Bridge is can be knocked out by a forty-year flood, which is much more common. I mean, not knocked out, but you can't, there's a low spot and you can't cross the Vine Maple Bridge on Highway one oh three. Um, am I doing okay so far? The other thing, so now, under housing, um, I think under Goal Ten, oh, I didn't make the page, but it was mentioned earlier in the meeting. I think for Clatso Plains about rural housing is not quote needed, which is totally incorrect. Um, and I think that under housing, we should study also people living in campers because mobile homes, once they're in place, are kind of permanent versus camper living, which in our housing crisis is going up all the time and creates its own special needs. And also the fire station under, anyway, the fire station does have a red, works with Red Cross for shelters under emergency stuff. And the fire station that, um, opposite on twenty-six, opposite Elderberry Inn, and that probably should be in there maybe. And, um, so now I have some pages named. So on page twenty-five of LC Jewel Plan and then before bottom for high intensity recreation, which I think is golf courses, maybe include camps, like summer camps for schoolchildren, other kinds of camps.
Um, uh, Ms. Gladwin, I think it's probably kind of hard for those of us, for the commission to really follow, you know, jumping around in the document like this. And so what I, what I suggest is that you do what we're doing, which is that, um, you just put together an email to staff making, um, specific requests with page numbers. And, um, and then like, in terms of like what we call scribners, like, you know, just small changes to, you know, extent of, you know, missing things on maps and things like that, they can make those changes, I think, after this meeting, before it gets to the Board of Commissioners, if they feel that's appropriate. So if you have like really important, especially policy changes that you'd like us, you'd like to make a request to the commission today, then, um, I'm going to ask you to just do those right now and then we're going to move on from the public, uh, hearing, but we might also ask you questions down the line.
Right. So, I mean, some of it is, I would like in the water thing, which thank you, you did a good thing about for studying of water, but I don't know about composting toilets, which might need to be studied also partly because if we have evacuation centers for tsunami fire things. And vis a vis campers, I don't know, anyway. So, um, the other thing, I don't know if it's important for the group to think about under the geological stuff, the thing about sedimentary versus basalt. I don't think so accurate description. Can I go more? Should I go more? Just a little bit more or not?
I'll give you one more minute because I think you're the only person, so.
Okay, well, I can go back to that. So I'm gonna go to, um, I think under page thirty, Policy Two of educating the public over tsunami, I mean, over earthquakes. I think it's important for the county to understand that there's a possibility of a lot of six-point, seven-point, eight-point earthquakes. There was an eight-point earthquake in fifteen hundred that was not a subduction zone quake and the geologists don't know what that quake was all about. The subduction zone can have three outcomes, total ripoff, whip out, which they talk about a lot. A gorda plate only, which they don't know how that would affect us up here. And the third thing I asked, is this possible like in South America? Can we have a zonal release all the way up and down after the gorda plate releases, but subsequent years, which would be maybe seven or eight-point earthquakes up here? So I think that's an important thing to study more, to elaborate more on earthquakes. And.
Thank you.
Can I just do?
Last one?
Oh, transportation should include bus stops maybe. And then, yeah, okay, I think that's it. Thank you for, I think that's it. Thank you for putting up with all of this kind of quick. I think I got through it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gladwin, for your comments today and also for all your work on the committee. Um, do we have any questions or comments from the commissioners of Ms. Gladwin? Yes, Commissioner Farrar?
I, I wondered with regard to, uh, public comment, if there's some way, how, how the information from the public meeting that was held at, uh, Jewel a week or two ago, if it, is that something we should look at at this meeting?
Director Henrickson?
Um, you could, it hasn't been released to the board yet. We have one more meeting this evening yet, uh, at six thirty PM. And that, the Oregon's Kitchen Table Staff will be making a presentation to the board on June twenty-second at five o'clock at their work session that evening. Um, and then from there, we can incorporate whatever direction the board wants to give us or findings. We'll have to see what the final outcome is, but, um, I did also, while I have the floor, I want to remind the Planning Commission. I had also forwarded written comments to you from Tammy Murray, uh, on the LC Jewel Plan. And any written comments that we've received are posted on the today's calendar page with our meeting agenda, and so written comments are posted up there as well.
Thank you. Um, may I just, did you attend the Jewel meeting?
I did.
Yeah, you guys did. Was there a specific comment to the community plan or more, did you hear more general comments on the overall comprehensive plan at that meeting?
There were some specifics.
Okay, maybe, maybe Commissioner Farrar, you can kind of share some of that as we go through. Okay, any other questions for, uh, Ms. Gladwin, sorry, Ms. Henrickson?
Yeah, just to go back to your question about the Jewel meeting. So the way that the community meetings have been structured, there have been three. Two are have been in person, one was in Napa, one was in Jewel, and the third one tonight is virtual. And the way that they're structured is that the board specifically identified three areas where they want to input from the communities for, for, to help in their decision-making, one being on the issue of housing, uh, one being on the issue of economic development, and the third being on the issue of public involvement. So it, the community or the meetings have not been structured, uh, so that they're focused on a specific plan or a specific goal necessarily, but, um, I guess they are kind of goals ten and eleven or ten and nine. Um, but, um, it's really been more general concepts, you know, what are our needs for housing? What are you willing to accept in terms of trade-offs, you know? Obviously, if we build more houses, you lose a little bit of your rural community because you will become more dense. Uh, things about economic development and how can we get, um, improve our public participation in land use?
Thank you. Yeah, and of, of course, I'm sure everyone in this room knows that there's a survey associated with that also. Um, that if you haven't filled it out, you should. Um, okay, uh, thank you. Or do we have any other public comment today? Okay, this hearing is now, or sorry, this public testimony is, Moni is now closed and discussion is open for Planning Commission members. So again, we're on page eighty-five of the packet today. We've got the background there with some description about the planning area. There's that second paragraph there that, that, uh, Commissioner Farrar will want put in the plan if it's not there already. And then our action items to review the plan, identify any questions and provide a recommendation, either just forwarding it with no changes or forwarding it as recommended for adoption, um, with, uh, some proposed amendments. So with that in mind, um, discussion is now open and we can start at the beginning of the, um, packet. I think, um, uh, Director Henrickson did a nice job of acknowledging all the participation and the challenges of participation in this very rural and very large planning area. Um, so special thanks to Pam Birmingham, Susannah Gladwin, the, and, and the Abings, Connie Moore, and Herb Olstead. And all the people who went to that meeting too. Yes, Commissioner Farrar?
I, in acknowledgement of the public comments we have received, uh, the written ones from, uh, Tammy, uh, Tammy Murray, received by email. I note that, uh, some of them, she, she's very terse in her comments, um, the opposite of the way I am. But, um, the last comment is, is, is especially difficult for me to interpret exactly. Uh, your comment is historical picture of LC Cemetery is awful. And that's the first page of this, uh, community plan. It's the cover. I, I assume is what she's referring to. The photographic self is quite good, uh, good quality. I don't know if she's referring to the subject and sort of like, why show a cemetery for your, your community area? Does anybody have any thoughts? I'm just trying to give, um, appropriate level of consideration for public comments that have been submitted.
Or does staff want to comment on why that picture was used, I guess? Or was somebody, did a, did a community member provide that?
No, it's a staff photo. Um, it was used just because we had a photo and, I don't know, I personally think historic cemeteries are cool, but that's just my opinion. We can certainly change the photo.
It does say it's, it is cool. It's an eighteen ninety-seven historic cemetery and it is discussed in the document. So I, I personally think it's fine. I do love that waterfall. I'm going to go find it. But, you know, I feel like.
I think it's fine as well. I just, uh, trying to, you know, give the public comment, uh, a discussion on it and, um.
Yeah, so the other, the other public comment, I can just go through it really quickly. I have it in front of me and I'm, I'm wondering if, um, in a lot of this is kind of scribners, so I'll just maybe, maybe, I don't, staff, uh, Director Henrickson, have you had a chance to, to look at these? Because if they're just scribner changes, maybe we don't need to spend a lot of time on it. Um, because I think most of it is about, you know, like missing information and what things are called. And I did shoot this over to Susannah Gladwin and Pam Birmingham, and Pam got back to me that she thought all of those proposed changes were fine too. So, um, so I'm wondering if, um, Director Henrickson, if you got a chance to just take a quick look?
Yeah, I looked at them before I sent them out to the Planning Commission members, and I think they're all reasonable and staff can certainly make those changes.
Okay, so, um, just for the, well, for the, for the public that is here, that letter is available as staff noted on the website, but they're really about, um, adding the Red Bluff Road Community Water System, um, changing LC Park to the Halum Park, um, and, um, does, um, really describing what types of county parks are there. Um, and, um, yeah, there's an area that was described as Elderberry, but really that's LC, so things like that. So staff will make those changes, um, for the Board of Commission meeting. Thank you. Um, Commissioner Farrar, uh, when you look at that narrative at the introduction at the beginning, um, it does have, uh, the size of it and a little bit of description. Would you like more description in there and in a map as we discussed in the last, in the last, uh, community plan? Are there other, um, suggestions for the introduction?
Uh, yes, I think the, the thing that I found also helpful was that, uh, population information that was provided in, um, I think it was the, uh, the El Cow, uh, area and, uh, you, you know, I thought it was helpful to show, uh, the figures for the nineteen seventy and then, uh, two thousand twenty census because it gave you a sense of how rapidly, you know, that's fifty-year period. It's, it's nice to see the change and relate it to what the overall county was. Um, so it, it'd be sort of redundant between all six plans, but it kind of sets it up where you have a better sense of how much of the population lives in this area. And definitely a map would be very useful for, for each of these areas. So that's it.
So maybe just in that first paragraph of the introduction, adding some of that, the location and background information as, and then, um, adding a map. Uh, do we need to do, I don't think we need to do a motion on that one. Is that right? Okay. Um, okay, so then this one's set up a little differently. It has a very short introduction and then it goes straight into the landscape units. Describing them and then.
So here again, a, a map that actually shows those landscape units, uh, add a scale and with colors that one can see where they are would, would be helpful. I don't think there is one for this area.
You know, there's supposed, there's supposed to be one that says map one, but then when you look, map one is geological hazards.
Oh, yeah.
So I think it's actually missing, but it was intended to be in here. Uh, Director Henrickson? Yeah.
The, the other thing on the landscape units themselves, the descriptions under the alluvial lowlands, um, I think it's important to also include that there's alluvial lowlands along the Nalum River and, uh, those are subject.
Says it there, there. Isn't it? Oh, no, sorry, that's under alluvial terraces.
Yeah, I think some of those are lowlands. I, I equate the alluvial lowlands to be those areas that still flood today. And, and there was a flood that inundated a lot of that land. So, um, I believe there's land that is not alluvial terrace that goes along parts of the Nalum and that it is a, it's a planning issue as to what happens to them. I think, uh, Susannah Gladwin could speak to that, but, um, anyway. That's my thoughts.
Okay. Natural resources. Commissioner Huang and Powers, let me know if you have anything in this section or natural hazards. Ms. Gladwin noted that we had a catastrophic flood back in ninety-six, but we also had the two thousand and seven windstorm, which was devastating to this area as well, both in terms of trees, electricity and flooding. Cut off for a couple of weeks. Cut off for a couple of weeks in here. That was when we learned two weeks was a minimum.
I didn't realize we're already on the hazards. On the natural resources. I, I thought it would have been nice, maybe it's a little late to try to do research on it, but under forest lands. It's mentioned. That approximately twenty-nine percent of Clotset County lands are publicly owned. Et cetera, et cetera. I, I think it'd be great if you could make a similar statement. Changing that one for one that applies only to this planning area. Because this is supposed to be about the area, not about the county overall, but that's. My thinking on it and it's a little late for that perhaps, have to do that. But I will say that under agricultural lands. It mentions. At the last sentence in that paragraph says policies pertaining to forest and ag. Lands can be found in goal three of the county wine plan. This is under the heading agricultural, but since it does specifically say pertaining to forest and ag land, I think that. You need to add and goal four in there since those are two distinct goals in the overall plan. And not just under goal three.
Before we move on from this one, I'll just note, you know, there, there is grazing, especially in the lower Nihalem Valley, which is not in Clotset County. But right on the county line, there's two very significant organic farms. King Fisher Farm, which is one of the oldest organic farms that supplies all the restaurants up and down the North Coast as well as Portland. And Jeff Trinari was the owner of that for many years and has just passed away, but as a new owner. And then Moon River Farms, so they're, they're, they're small farms, but they're very significant, actually very valuable. The amount, their produce is beautiful and expensive. So I think it's important to note that they exist, though, not only for grazing land, but also. You know, small, small farms for vegetables. And, and you know, kind of the new emerging market is flowers because people pay more for flowers than vegetables, it turns out. So, yeah, so I, I think it's important to note in that area, that's, that's, that's an emerging, but. King Fisher Farms, I think, is thirty-some years old, so it's a very established, old hippie, organic farm. Okay, anything else under natural resources? Then we're on natural hazards. Flooding is a big issue in this area. And stream and riverbank erosion. This is also an area that will be increasingly under threat to, for wildfire because just the amount of timberland housing interface. Tsunamis noted, just because everyone's going to be evacuating through this area. Which is an important note, I think. Uh, sorry, Director Henderson.
Thank you. I did just want to let the planning commission know, I did change out the three seaside rural maps, so now these maps are correct. And on the flood, flood layers, these flood layers are actually the FEMA flood layers. So the, the map already does show those.
Thank you. And then it takes us down to page fifteen or one oh three of our packet, cultural housing, public facilities. The polar opposite of lots of plains in terms of housing. Fast majority of it is older. Not very much. Cause it's so much timberland. Has its own school system, which is kind of cool. Fire protection, transportation. So this gets into Ms. Gladwin's comments about traffic volumes and the average daily trips not really reflecting. The surge that we get, especially in the summer months and really how dangerous this highway is. You know, we have catastrophic. Accidents on this highway. At least every month, if not every couple of weeks. Open space, parks and recreation. That's a great parks and natural areas. I thought it was interesting this, that Cannon Beach is a Cola Forest Reserve is in this section. Which you can see on this map in green. Oh, no, not this map.
Yeah, I updated this map as well, so you'll see that map in the seaside rural.
Oh, that's seaside rural. Okay, yeah, that's what I'm gonna use, sorry. Okay, so let's see. Commissioner Farrar, you have any more comments up to page one eleven? I'm into community development.
Well, while you're, while you're on that page, map three, it says there top. I don't think it's changed. It should be map four. It's a small change, but.
I also wanted to just note about the school districts that a lot of the outer kids don't go to seaside. They go to. New Conny. They're, they go to the New Conny School District, especially those that live out on fifty-three. So you actually get another county school district pulled in. Is it important? Probably not, you know, but I just think it's. I mean, interesting, such a huge. For reaching. Area, you end up in different counties. All right, community development. Fish Hawk Lake is the only rural service area. And if we don't have any more comments on the narrative, we can move on to the goals, objectives and policies. Okay, page twenty-eight. Shoreland policies. Alluvial lowland policies. And then they have separate, just to point out, they have separate policies for natural resources and natural hazards, so. I was just looking at alluvial lowlands and terraces and thinking about flooding, but we could, I think they covered that later. This is an area that has. Drinking water challenges. So natural resources policies, water resources, page one one seven.
I, I have one comment about policy two.
Okay.
It would be just a clarification. It, the policy mentions. In the second phrase there after the first comment in that paragraph. The county should review its minimum water flow requirements. I, I, that, that's kind of non-specific. I think it should say it's minimum water flow requirements for residences. Or homes, however you want to state it. Minimum flows reminds one a lot of streams, so it'd be just a. A minor point of clarification, they're talking about dwellings. And then in policy four, I thought too, there could be a little clarification made about. This is talking about Fish Hawk Creek. And whether additional protections are needed and I just thought maybe specify. What protections, protections from contamination or from diminished flow or. Overuse or. I was left kind of wondering exactly. What's intended.
Yeah, wouldn't, we do in E S E analysis, that's that economic, social, environmental, energy analysis. What we're looking for are conflicting uses and so we would actually be looking for protections from conflicting uses, whatever those. Are identified to be as part of the study.
Just the discussion around that, was that around, that's, I mean, is that Fish Hawk Creek and Lake? Is that, is that around the endangered species challenges that they recently had and. Whether there needs to be some changes? So, is that what the, where that comes from?
I may defer to Susannah for her recollection, but my recollection is that it wasn't related to the Fish Hawk. Lake draining, that it was more the creek and the falls itself, not, not the lake.
Ms. Gladwin, would you like to comment about if you're there and available?
I just unmuted, so I just want to say there are two fish hot creeks. There's a major one that comes in. It goes by behind south of the Elk Meadows. And then there's the Fish Hawk Creek that feeds Fish Hawk Lake. Fish Hawk Lake, I think historically has had. High temperatures being a lake and then it affects the creek downstream. It has been cited as impacting, I believe, in the Halem River in its higher temperatures. Does that help any?
So is that where this, this policy came from, is from that creek and lake?
Yeah, the. Draining Fish Hawk Lake, I believe. But I'm not at all an expert opinion. I, that's just what I think. I don't really know for sure. But it is important to designate two different fish hot creeks because. The other fish hot creek running alongside of Highway two oh two, south of the highway is a big system and totally different. That just might help for clarification. Did you follow me?
Yeah, yeah, so I guess it's, it's hard, it's, it's hard for us to know where this policy came from and which one it's talking about. So, so we want to make sure that we're, you know, following the intent of the community, so. Your team, so did, who proposed this and did they propose it because of Fish Lake?
My understanding that, that the high, that there were definitely higher temperatures of water coming out of the lake down. That particular Fish Hawk Creek to the Nihalem River. Now, the upper watershed council that does testing would be the one who probably would know the answer to that.
Can we ask that staff just clarify with the committee, the, like, and just, I can clarify that, the location of that and we leave it as is today?
I made a note that we need to go back and review the meeting minutes to verify which Fish Hawk Creek we were talking about.
Yeah, okay, great. Cause I wouldn't want to make a change and it'd be the wrong, wrong thing, so I don't know that area at all. Should go to those, that's the falls though, is that the falls, the picture from the beginning of the report?
No, Fish Hawk Falls is the other. Yeah, Fish Hawk Falls and Lee Wood and Creek are from the other Fish Hawk Creek.
The other fish.
That I mentioned.
Yeah, okay, got it.
Totally different.
All right, thank you, Ms. Gladwin. Okay, moving on, natural hazards, stream and riverbank erosion, earthquakes, wildfire.
Just, just above natural hazard, so there's. Policy one. Oh, no, that's policy one on natural hazards, excuse me, so next page, right there. I didn't quite understand how seaside rural planning areas being pulled into that. It, it, it seems like kind of an odd statement there to me and I don't know if it. I don't know if it's an allusion to the idea that they may get hazard refugees moving to, into the. Jewel area for, to get away from, say, a tsunami situation or.
Is that, it's actually, that a typo, Director Henderson, that like maybe you had it in both plans because it's the same group?
Yeah, it's the same group, the same policy, I think, is in both plans, so it was just a cut and paste error on my part, my apologies.
Okay, stream bank erosion, native vegetation, earthquakes. Two weeks, people, minimum two weeks. Wildfire.
On the wildfire one, there's a really open-ended policy number seven there. Also, I, I just thought about this now, these are policies are numbered rather than lettered. And I wonder if we have a kind of a format or a. I don't know, a way we're putting these together where they're all similar, using letters for policies and. Or whether that matters.
Again, that's an error on my part. I tried to remember to do it on all the community plans and I apparently did not do this one, so again, my apologies.
Yeah, I thought we had, at one point, all talked about that, anyway. So there's that, but under policy seven, as it's, it's shown here, there's this very vague policy and. I mean, I offered just deleting it, it says the county shall consider other sources of information as they become available. And. I would hope so. I don't know, I get, I guess you could leave it in, but it's, it's like. It's, it's just so non-specific, it doesn't really seem like a policy. I know it's related to wildfire under this heading, but still.
To me, it's not worth changing. Under housing, I noted under policy four. You know, I know we're looking at ADUs, but the point of ADUs is that they're accessory to a primary residence. And it's not a way to add houses to properties that are not allowed to have more than one house, you know what I mean? And so as soon as you get to a place where you're allowing ADUs to be the same size or bigger than the primary residence. Then you're really just allowing multiple houses on properties. And so I, you know, that's one that I just, I just want to flag as something is, is a little worrying, like if we're gonna do that, if we're gonna increase density throughout rural area. Then we should just do it the way that, you know, rather than creating a loophole and that is not intended, I think. And, you know, ADUs are a very kind of narrow thing where you end up with something with, you know, a studio or one bedroom, not a. Three-bedroom house or something that is basically another house on a lot, which is not the intention of Oregon's land use rules. To, especially, and it's expensive for the county to have huge houses everywhere, all over the place.
I, I'd like to make a comment on this because I agree with what you're saying and that's my philosophy, but I have to be. Honest, or I'm, I, I was very happy to have attended these two. Area public meetings and sit down with people that I don't ordinarily sit down with and hear from. And I learned a lot by just listening to them and at the jewel meeting. I sat at a table with three local people and and I heard others in the room express the same idea that there's a real shortage of places to live there. And it seems to me the community is kind of torn between wanting to be very sparsely populated and to have it very rural and have it very quiet, they all mentioned how quiet it is and how dark it is and all those things, and yet they almost all said that there's a lack of housing and that they need more housing and at my table, it was all about, well, because of the changes in I think it's S P three ninety one, you know, there's certain limitations on where accessory dwelling units are allowed, and it's only on RA zone lands, it's not on AF or F eighty or others. And they were lamenting that because some people had AF land like I do out here on John Day River Road. And you can't do the ADU thing there, and so you need to think about it in the context of what those local folks were expressing there, and this is their plan, so in my way of thinking, I'm gonna yield to their opinion in their own community plans, even though personally I may not think it's a great idea.
Yeah, well, I think the state will you know, dictate that stuff in the end, it's, you know, the county could express opinions on it, but there's they're pretty adamant about protecting the farm and forest land from development. In my experience, so, but I I'm fine with leaving it, I just, I just wanted to note, to me, it's like, I just, I don't, you know, you just don't. I I feel like if you're gonna, if you're gonna do multiple housing or multifamily housing in these areas, you want to do it the right way and not in a way that's like a loophole, I don't know, it just just feels strange to me. Specific thing, but a side note on that, I saw the ADU tour is happening in Portland for the first time in multiple years now, and used to be that they would do the square foot price and it would be like hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to build an ADU. Now it's like two hundred and eighty to three hundred thousand dollars. Just in Portland, but it's still, it's like pretty crazy, so. Okay, anything else on housing? Transportation? Recreation?
On the transportation policy, it's it's more a question around what can the county kind of weigh in on and policy one there, when the State Department of Transportation improvements to in in Highway one oh one is the only US one there, I think, well, maybe twenty six is, I don't know, but my 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 point is, it it seems like the policy should be modified to get to the point that the county would request to be involved in consulting with ODOT to consider safety improvements whenever stuff is done on those highways, we can't really dictate to them what they're gonna do along their highways. But we can certainly as the Board of Commissioners weigh in and get an ear, get their ear and see what the people would would like to have done there. Isn't that true that that we can't really require those that safety provisions be implemented along state highways?
Now, we do not dictate to ODOT.
Commissioner Farrar, do you want to make a motion on just some like cleaning up the language a little bit to be more clear about that, or do you want to leave it as is?
I would like to modify it that the county should request when improvements are made to highways one oh one, twenty six, fifty three and two oh two that the county that ODOT should consider safety improvements be made, including and then leave those those different safety things in like the bikeways and the crosswalks the likes.
Yeah, so this is kind of more about bicycles and pedestrians, but again, like this is like super dangerous highway, and so any safety improvements should be welcomed and should be encouraged by the county, I agree. Okay, so let's see, so Director Hendrickson is putting the doc, putting the motion up here, so Commissioner Farrar has moved the transportation policy one be amended to read the county should request that when State Department of Transportation improves US highways one oh one, twenty six, fifty three and two oh two, ODOT should consider provision of a safe bikeway, suitable crosswalks of safe bi- but bikeways, suitable crosswalks on lines and the installation of curvings to separate auto traffic when where possible. Do we have a second to that motion?
Sure, I'll second it.
Seconds, so we have a motion in a second to amend this language, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay, recreation policies. Historic resources, cultural areas, there's a weird underline there under policy one, staff. Under cultural areas, we have the Chinook Indian Nation there. I don't know if we want to change that one, probably to tribes. Moving on to community development, land use classification. Rural lands. And natural land, and then we're at the end. Any final proposed amendments, motions, questions, comments before we wrap up the public hearing on or the make make our final motion? Okay, so going back to our original motion, oh yeah, thank you, I'll read it tiny, tiny, okay, so we're looking for suggested motion. Recommend the Board of Commissioners adopt the LC Jewel Community Plan Draft Five as amended. Would someone like to make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make it, so do I need to repeat that?
I'm okay with you not, I'll I'll repeat it in a second here, do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, now I lost it on the screen, though. So we have a motion, I'm gonna try to remember it, to we have a motion to recommend that the Board of Commissioners adopt the updated comprehensive plan, LC Jewel Community Plan. All those in favor, please say aye. As amended. Aye, the motion passes unanimously, thank you. All right, two down. One thirty. Moving on, okay, so the we've, the these, this recommendation will be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners for their approval after the legal review has been completed. And the hearing is now closed, moving on to public hearing agenda item number four. This is a legislative hearing regarding revisions to Clapton County Comprehensive Plan. Lewis and Clark Only Waluski Community Plan. Would staff please make their report?
Good afternoon, Miss, I'm Julia Decker, Planning Manager, Community Development. And I apologize, let me start by apologizing for the glitch in the system that caused you to receive the reduced size with all of the notes and everything in the marginalia. That was, I'm not sure what happened, it stripped out a few things, including the name of the community plan. Director Hendrickson has kind of reconstituted it here for you. So you received something that was probably a little bit more difficult to read than the rest of the plans, and so I'm sorry about that. I considered sending you new materials, and then I thought they really need an extra, an extra part to that packet, I'm sure of it. So I did not do it, and so anyways, we constituted here for you. One of the things that staff had been looking at was for this plan specifically because this community plan the planning area is really large and it's kind of a big blob, I guess. And so the maps on it are kind of difficult, and so staff was looking at making these maps a full page each, and so where you see them in the plan that you're looking at today, just consider that you would have somewhere in that vicinity a full sized map on a full sized page of its own. Because I believe that would be easier to read. Also, I need to thank the about nine community members who participated in the CAC. We had people kind of morphing in and out over this extended period of time. But and Commissioner Webb participated as well off and on. So it was it was kind of a fluid group, but I really appreciate the input from them. Let's see. Gave you some introductory materials in here, but I did want to kind of highlight a couple of things that I don't know if they're really called out as well as they could be, some of this is anecdotal and so we do have an issue with water in that area, and it isn't just the whole miles crossing Jeffers Garden area which everybody knows has some issues with water. But as you get farther away from the from town and and more out into the into the hinterlands, into rural, out past two oh two and, you know, out past the the loop. You run into areas where you don't have any kind of a community water system and wells tend to run dry in the August, September time period, so that is a hindrance to growth. Most of this planning area is industrial forest. One of the things I was noticing on the maps when I was looking at the recreational basis map was it looks like, oh gosh, there aren't very many parks out there, and then I realized, well, the whole thing looks like a park. And a lot of times people obtain permission to use for hunting or fishing or hiking purposes, some of those industrial forest lands, and so I don't know how many of you have taken Highway two oh two all the way out to pick up one of the other highways going out of the county, but it's a very scenic area, and that was driven home to me when we did the Gulf Fore forestry tour out there. And we had a number of people on the tour who I don't think had been in that area before and and remarked on how beautiful it was. And I I thought, you know, I I it's the heart of the county, really, and it is agriculture and it is forestry, we have a lot of floes and rivers, and we've had some major wetland restoration projects in the last few years on both sides of Youngs Bay and and Youngs River and at the that this at the confluence of the Waluski and Youngs River, so there's, there's a lot of of things happening out there, but there are not a lot of people. And you see that in some of the population data. So let's see. I think I'll stop there and just let you go, but I do apologize for what this looks like to you, one of the things I had hoped to do when when this is all solidified is to ask Director Hendrickson to please put it into the format that she uses because it is so much prettier than what I did, and with that if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Ms. Decker, I really appreciate the context there in the narrative. Again, another area that got its own unique qualities and much thanks to staff and volunteers that spent so much time putting this document together. It's not easy. Okay, any questions for staff before we move on to public comment? See Chris Farrar.
Actually, why don't you go ahead with the public comment, and I, these are more specific things, not general questions.
Okay. You don't see anyone in the room here, there is a phone that's unidentified, but I don't see anyone in the room here, so we might get through this pretty quickly. This hearing is open for public testimony, all speakers from the floor to state their name and address before speaking. If you're representing some some organization or something, identify who you represent. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak today? Public testimony is now closed, discussion is open for Planning Commission members. I'm going to page one twenty four of the packet, that's where the memo begins, the good description of the planning area. And then at the bottom of page one twenty five, it gives us our marching orders. Reviewing the plan, identifying questions, suggesting amendments throughout the review. And then making a motion recommending adoption to the Board of Commissioners, either as is or with a few amendments along the way, it sounds like there's some formatting that may happen between now and then. And if we have any little typos, just I encourage everybody to just send them in to Ms. Decker or Director Hendrickson, and we can get those taken care of outside this meeting. Commissioner Farrar.
Well, I, this goes to my general comment that I I I like having an introductory paragraph that talks about the area a lot, and this this is a good example here of where some population data were included. Some of the other plan areas didn't have that, but this one does, but I think taking that paragraph out of the background provided in the cover memo that goes with this plan that talks about the size of the area, ninety six thousand acres, roughly a hundred and fifty square miles, etc., it's on the page one twenty four of the packet, and and that paragraph would would be great just to insert it right in here in in the plan that will be will be finalized and then yeah, I noticed right away that the font size was a lot smaller, but I figured that isn't necessarily the way it's going to be in the end, so I didn't have a problem with with that. I'm glad to hear the maps will be enlarged to full page size because I think that's appropriate. The one with the landscape that's on page one thirty of our packet, I think it's the second page of the plan is really good, and and I assume that that's where we're headed with each area to have a landscape map where you can clearly see those where those landforms are and get a better handle as to why the the different considerations are giving to given to what what's appropriate to do or not do on those lands. I found that a very good map, and I thought the the second figure that comes up, that's sort of the line drawing of that same thing with the with the areas with small numbers in them and and they go with the key there where you can actually see what those those landform type names are was was also helpful. And I'll I'll hold off and let you kind of thumb through the document from there as as you wish.
Okay.
Oh, one thing, one thing I did want to add. I really appreciate the explanation of the Waluski business because I can just imagine that people that live out there hear about this a lot and and I found it, you know, it's kind of an aside from planning, but what the heck, I I thought it gave it a personality to this particular plan that I enjoyed reading that, so thank you.
There's also like different pronunciations too, like some people call it Waluski There's also like different pronunciations too, like some people call it Willski versus Willski. Um, but as, that is cool. Um, okay, so we have the introduction, and we have the suggestion from Commissioner Farrar that the map of the planning area be included, as well as some additional information about like the location and quality of, qualities, the unique characteristics of this planning area, why it's a planning area, why it's important. That would be great. Then we get into the landscape units, which describes, you know, I think, as Ms. Decker said, this is, you know, it's largely timber, but if it's not timber, it's, it's, it's a stream or estuary and, and associated wetlands. So you have a very large estuary and shorelands component, probably like half and half when you look at it. So you have on 30, 132, the estuary and shorelands. Talk a little bit about Crest and the great wetland restoration work that's happened and continues to happen in this area. And also the challenges, you know, that's striking about this area is there's so many dyking districts, and so many of them are not active. And you have a lot of very degraded infrastructure, so risky.
I, I have a question about the use of a term here with the lands, landscape forms. And there's a talk of coastal shorelands. And to me, coastal means along an oceanfront, that kind of coast. But it appears, from what I read here, that Crest, the Columbia River Estuary Task Force Organization extends that land classification to the shores along the estuary. Do I have that correct?
Yeah, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. This is Julia, and what I was going to say is, Clatwick County, with the exception of about eight square miles over by south of Westport, is coastal. It's all considered coastal. So anywhere that you have water supply, you have the potential for coastal shoreline. So we, we are a coastal county.
Yeah, I was just gonna add that's, that from a biological and ecological standpoint, from my history, you know, the Columbia River is tidal for 200 miles. And the only reason it's not tidal above that is there's that dam, the Bonneville Dam. And then the, the saltwater intrusion goes up to Cathlament. So you actually, depending on the time of year, have quite a lot of saltwater. Um, you know, 30, 30 miles in, let alone eight, which is what Astoria is, I think. So.
Yes, but, but my point is, goes way beyond that. For, for one thing, the salinities in the estuary are generally way lower than the Pacific Ocean, although tongues of ocean water move along the bottom and go inland quite a ways. I've looked at the Crest maps that were done in the 80s of that. It's very interesting. But the real distinction between a coastal shoreline and an estuary, an estuarine shoreline or a river shoreline, lake shoreline, is the difference between really strong wave action along a coast and also longshore drift, which is extremely important for sediment transport in the oceans, but almost non-existent in the estuary environment. So I find it, I don't know, I, I disagree with the classification, but I understand where it's coming from, so I'll live with it. But it misses important geographical and geological oceanographical points.
Um, okay. So shorelands, and then Youngs Bay, Lewis and Clark River, Youngs River. Any questions or comments on those? And then we move into natural resources. And I guess they talk a little bit in this section in the landscape descriptions, landscape units about wildlife. And then they have a fish and wildlife section, but what struck, what struck me in here was just that how much it was about birds and not about fish. And, and so to the, kind of to the discussion around the Columbia River, like, to me, somebody who worked on the Columbia River doing restoration for 10 years, the Youngs Bay and the lower reaches of these rivers are all part of the Columbia River. And, and they're incredibly important for juvenile salmon. And there are, of course, 13 listed salmon and steelhead on the Columbia, plus you look on, and then there's the orca whales who live in the ocean, but also live up past Astoria because it's an estuary. And those are all listed, and, and they all rely on this landscape, these landscape units. And so I think there's a lot of discussion in this, in this community plan about the hatcheries and about spawning and upriver. And I will agree from my reading, a lot of those native runs spawning salmon and steelhead from this area have been extirpated. There are some, and they've been replaced by hatchery, for better or for worse. And, but the lower reaches are used by a lot of listed fish. And they're, you know, and it's the juveniles, not the adults. And they're not spawning for the most part up there. But I think they need to be noted because that's, that's why those restoration projects are happening. You know, it, the Lewis and Clark and at the National Park and those other Crest projects is because of those juvenile fish, not because of the spawner. So, so I, I'm, I'm going to suggest that maybe under the fish and wildlife section, that staff better notes that. Because, so if you look on page 137, I'm, you know, they're talking about spawning streams, but just making you know that there are 15 listed salmon and steelhead species and, well, fish species on the Columbia and the juveniles do use the lower, the lower reaches habitat. And I'm happy to help if, if you want to run by any language outside of this meeting. I'm happy to, you know, just like a couple of sentences would be enough, I think, but. Um, okay. Out of, out of the nature section into the hazard section, or do you have any more on the nature section? Commissioner Farrar Powers or Juan.
I had a, a quick point to make back on in the natural resource, under the natural resources heading, there's discussion of, there's forest land is the first subheading under there. And there's the first paragraph there discusses the transfer of lands from private ownership to the county. I think there should be another sentence in there that clarifies that then the county passed the land on to the state. And so that the next sentence that says in 1973, the Oregon Board of Forestry formally dedicated blah, 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 is, you know, a logical transition there. The county gave this land, deeded it, as I understand, to the state. So just if one sentence could be added there. And also maybe note that 200,000 acres mentioned in the last sentence of that first paragraph refers to the county and not, not to just the Elkhaw.
Okay. Moving on to critical hazard areas. So a big discussion about flood hazards, as I noted, the dike breaching or the dike challenges in that area. Shoreline erosion, high groundwater, mass movement. I was wondering, Ms. Decker, is this within the tsunami zone? Like, would a tsunami go up the Columbia to the lower reaches of the Youngs?
Yes.
There are areas within the planning area that are definitely would be considered in the tsunami layer. They would show up in that layer. We don't have an adopted tsunami zone, but we do have an informational layer. And when you click that on, on web maps, you will see it going, surging right, right straight up into Youngs Bay and up into some of the rivers. So there are, there are some flood zones there, so flood zones as well as tsunami layers.
So there is no discussion of that in, in this section, and it feels to me really important, especially considering all the other challenges with the dikes.
So we can add a paragraph about that.
Yeah. And there's also no discussion of earthquakes. I don't know, maybe there's mass movement, like slides, but I mean, I guess it's like an overreaching problem for the whole county. But is there anything unique to this area around earthquake and earthquake preparedness? You know, I know.
Has, has areas of mass movement. I mean, there's, other than in the Miles Crossing Jeffrey's Garden area, which also has compressible soils, it, it's really just mass movement for the most part.
But if there was, but if there's a lot of mass movement and there's an earthquake, then this area might be particularly vulnerable. And then also that it's, would be cut off because all the bridges would be gone, right?
Like the rest of the county, right?
Yeah, but I feel like some areas are worse than others, you know, if you're, I guess there's, there's a Highway 30 bridges, there's, you know, I guess, but you know, if you're in some areas, you're closer to, closer to help. But if you get cut off, like by the Youngs Bay Bridge and the, you know, and they, I think when I've heard, I don't know this much about it, but when I've heard Pat Corcoran talk, he said that the Miles Crossing area is like one of the most vulnerable places for a tsunami, for tsunami deaths, right? Isn't that what? And so it's really important that we as a county recognize that and prepare for that. If, if we're going to be continuing, well, we already have people living there, so.
Yeah, I, I agree that that Miles Crossing area is, is very hazardous for tsunami casualties because it's low and flat, and it's kind of a long trek to get anywhere that's not low and flat. So you might not be, have time to get to high ground if you live out in the middle there.
And all the roads are on dikes, and it's pretty. And there's a lot of junk. If you watch, if you watch those movies, like, the wave doesn't kill you, it's all the junk in the wave. It kills you, but anyway. Um, yeah, I really, that really struck me. I felt like this, this section was pretty weak, actually. That, you know, that I feel like we got to, you know, in an area where you have that high, you know, that high-risk, higher population, especially I feel like we're in, we're inviting more development in those areas that are higher risk. So eyes wide open.
I, I do know, note however, that somewhere in what I've read in the past few days, it was emphasized a couple of times that hazards, Goal 7, is dealt with in the main planning document countywide. So that might be why this area treats it or doesn't treat it, either treats it lightly or doesn't treat it at all. That some of those things were, were kind of looked at to be in the big plan, in the, the overall plan, not your other.
Yeah, well, that's why I asked, like, you know, what is it about this area that, you know, I think it's, you know, what's unique about this area around those, those issues? And if there isn't anything, fine, but I feel like there is. Okay, I'm on page 141, cultural housing. I didn't know that was an Old Navy hospital up there. That's kind of cool. And services, so water districts, fire. And then 145 is forest land. Recreation. Preservation. So then we get into the, we get into the landscape units, I guess, the coast range foothills, islands, alluvial terraces, natural. And then we get to community development. Commissioner Farrar, do you have any comments before any of those sections?
No, they, they don't. I don't wait until the policies.
All right, well, let's do the policies then, if no other commissioners have comments. Page 152. Estuary policies, shoreline policies, I guess, is the first section. Unique to this area is talking quite a bit about dredging. Then alluvial lowlands policy, coast range foothills. Fish and wildlife. And so what I know here that is that there's no natural hazards policies for this area.
Yeah, I'm wondering, does, does any of the staff have a comment about that? And whether the Systems Advisory Group did feel that hazards was being dealt with in the countywide documents sufficiently? Or was there actually an aversion to really taking up, making policies around tsunami hazard?
I'm thinking back to the discussions of the committee, and it isn't that nobody discussed flood or compressible soils or even landslide to Paver Beach. It's just that I think it was, oh yeah, well, that's in Goal 7. I'm, I'm trying to remember if there was any. it was, oh, yeah, well, that's been goal seven. I'm, I'm trying to remember if there was any specific discussion. And it just really seemed like it didn't come up as anything other than that goal seven.
Okay. I think, I mean, I wouldn't add anything myself. I don't feel comfortable doing that. We have no one in the room from that committee, so, but I, it does, it's concerning to me that, that there's nothing specific to their area, and so I just note it. The other groups had them.
Yeah, overall, the, the policies in this plan are greatly streamlined, which in a way is good. I think you can have so many policies, it gets a little bit hard to keep track of. So I appreciated the way this is laid out. And I guess if the local community is comfortable with the the overall plans that are countywide, that that's enough for their their specific area, then that's, that's fine. That's their choice.
Okay, so we have our landscape units, fish and wildlife. Do you have any comments on those policies, commissioners? And then next is housing.
Under, under housing. Well, actually, it's under, I guess, public facilities, which is the next heading down. I have something.
Okay, go ahead.
So that's on page 30 of the plan and actually, right, right above the public facilities policy, so it's the next page down to be policy I. It talks about the capacity of sewer and water districts to serve the community or not clearly known additional analysis is needed. But I just think a minor word change there needs to be made to turn it into a policy. It's just, it's just talking. It's not saying the county should or shall. So I was going to just suggest inserting at the, ahead of the word additional, the county should encourage or request additional analysis just to turn it into a policy.
Or the county should work with special districts or something like that, like, you know, like, because it really is that.
Yeah.
It is really something that could, that should be led probably by the special districts, but the county could, could work with special districts to do an additional analysis, something like that.
Yes.
Okay, there you go. The county should work with special districts to conduct additional analysis and clear communication about realistic infrastructure capacity. And then take out is, is needed to or just say is needed and then say to help inform, sorry. Yeah. There you go. Getting a little foggy brained here, staff.
Then just below, just below that in policy A of public facilities. I, I was going to suggest changing that wording. They ensure there is adequate water to meet future demands. I, I don't know how you can ensure there will be adequate water for future demands. There can be inadequate supply, maybe. So I was going to say the water districts are encouraged to determine existing capacity and realistic alternatives to increase supply to meet future demands or something to that effect. In other words, there's no way they can you know, just make water out of nothing. It's
I think that's substantive enough that if you're going to do that, you have to make a motion because I think that is changing what they wrote, like, you know, in a more substantive way.
Well, what would it mean to ensure there is adequate water to meet future needs?
Well, water districts have to go through these whole processes to determine, you know, how many hookups they can provide and, you know, and, and what they're, you know, so I mean, it's part of their process.
Correct. So that's why I was saying the first part should be more about determine existing capacity and then see if there are realistic alternatives to increase that capacity. Not just simply to ensure there's more water, like taking hydrogen and oxygen and zapping it with an electrical current to make it. Anyway, maybe it's just me. You don't have to change.
I think, I, so I just think the water and sewer districts, like, it's one way that communities have been able to determine if they want to grow. And so, you know, if we're putting in an obligation to expand capacity, then that's a different thing than saying, you know, keep an eye on it. And so I just, I just acknowledge that, you know, that's when you get, we've had that happen here where um, you know, we hit a wall on sanitary and then you have a big, you have a big debate over, do you want to expand sanitary or water? Do you want to keep?
Well, that's what I'm trying to revise it to, to be realistic, to say what the capacity is now. And so it's not unlimited now. It's, it's, we can provide this much water now. That's what we've got with our system. And here's a few ideas of what we might do to increase it, if that's what was desired.
Yeah.
But this says it will ensure that there will be water, which ensures the development is possible.
Yeah, I know. Okay, Commissioner Powers wants to talk and then maybe we'll come back if you want to.
Just, just to continue the conversation. I think what you're asking for, Commissioner Farrar, is for the water districts to continue their analysis so that there will be adequate water for the future. That's, that's what I'm really hearing you say to me, not that they will invent water, but try to figure out how they're going to meet future demand of what they have.
Yes, but.
Their analysis. So they should be encouraged to do that. Am I off base?
No, that's, that's, that's it. That's, that's the second half. The first half is just to determine what the existing capacity is, which I'm sure they probably have.
Yeah, and that would be through the analysis.
Yeah.
And that would, that would be all part of that analysis is figure out what they got, what they need, how they're going to get there.
Yes.
Yeah, so I would say it suggests just in, in the water districts are encouraged to continue their analysis, ensuring adequate water for future needs, something like that. Whatever.
So I'm, I'm hearing a motion from Commissioner Powers.
Yeah, I'll make that as a motion if anybody captured it.
If that's what, if that's what Commissioner Farrar is interested in, so it really just adds a couple of words. The water districts are encouraged to continue their analysis to ensure. So that is, I don't know if that's exactly what you were saying, though, Commissioner Farrar.
I guess I'd be removing the word ensure because that says, we'll, we'll get it done. We'll get the water somehow. If we have to go to California and divert it, I would like ensure taken out of there and the idea that we necessarily can have an unlimited supply. We would have a supply that's limited by what the land and water can support, which is sort of a countywide way of thinking about our development is we live within our means, but we don't restrict ourselves. We try to understand what we have.
Okay, how about instead of to ensure you put weather? So it's.
Or that, yeah.
Sorry, or, yeah. That, oh, yeah, just continue their analysis that
Yeah.
there is an adequate water.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, any of that works, but so just wordsmithing a little bit, but I get what you're saying. You're just like trying to. Um, okay, the water dis, okay, so if you're comfortable with that, Commissioner Powers, it would say the water districts are encouraged to continue their analysis that that there is adequate water to meet future needs. Does that work, Commissioner Powers? Sorry, you're on mute.
Yes.
Okay.
So James, to reflect that, yes.
Commissioner Farrar, would, would you like to make a second for that?
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Kwong, any opposed? Okay, we got a thumbs up from Commissioner Kwong as well. Okay, that, the motion passes unanimously. Okay, so we're almost to the end here, people. And public facilities, okay, rural service areas, rural lands policies, rural ag lands. Any final comments, questions, edits?
Yeah, under rural lands policies, I think it's a policy C. Um, I just wanted to reword it a little bit to turn it into a policy. That's again, just sort of a statement. So it was going to be more like you know, encourage, the county should encourage or provide incentives, however you want to put it for neighborhood commercial zones. Allowing for such uses as gas stations, that, that way it's a policy. The, the county's gonna do something. It's either going to encourage it or.
Or consider, maybe?
Yeah.
The county.
But I mean, they could even provide incentives, who knows? I just, I think there's a need for that kind of thing, you know, little, little pockets of important commercial services in areas where there is concentrated rural development without turning it into a town.
Yeah, okay, so you can take out then the second as need, are needed. There, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go. Okay, so, um, Commissioner Farrar is, has made a motion to amend rural policy, rural lands policy. And C, the county should consider or provide incentives for commercial zones, allowing for such uses as a gas station, smaller grocery store in those areas remote from existing commercial areas. I think the Elsie Jewel people would like that, too. They, I hear that from Susan Clavon sometimes. We do have those, but whether they're maximized, the incentives part might help. Some year we'll have a deli again in Arch Cape, but who knows? I'm not holding my breath. Um. Um, okay, so we made a motion. Sorry, do we have a second for that?
I'll second that.
Okay, Commissioner Powers has seconded. Uh, there's a motion on the table. Um, any discussion?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I just had the little point, I guess. Um, for the area, I know it's, it's very large and but the only really viable commercial area, and again, is in the the four-way over there. And that to encourage any more gas stations or anything like that is, I mean, that area is, so is very vulnerable to tsunami because it's so low. And I, I can't imagine where else could we possibly encourage that to be able to develop. I was just a thought.
Thank you. And Commissioner Kwong, you live in that area, so I appreciate you speaking up on this. You have better recognition of like the actual landscape. Um, so any comments on that?
Yeah, so my response to that is I, I thought about the same things and as I say, all I was attempting to do with this one was to turn it into a policy rather than just a a statement as, as, as it was worded before. So I just was trying to insert the idea that the county would, would take a role in this, but I understand the idea that it's, it's a mixed bag. Maybe you want a little bit of development, maybe you don't. So I'm not trying to get this very rural part of our county to have a lot of obnoxious little 24-hour grocery stores or something. So I would, I could be convinced to just strike the idea of doing this if, uh, but, but there must have been support from the CAC to to put such a policy there. It's just their language turned out in such a way that it wasn't really a policy. It was just sort of a, a statement.
It says above it, two number, if you look at B, new commercial zone shall only be considered if a neighborhood type, if of a neighborhood type. I don't know what that means. Or if concentrated in an addition, in, in adjacent to existing well-established business areas. So they're allowed to avoid dispersal. So actually, the two things together make them a little more limited than alone. Um, but that's why I had suggested consider because I feel like, you know, if you're providing incentives or encouraging, that's a, like a very active, like, and I don't know if that's what they were looking for. But, um, it gives, it gives an opportunity to, to like, consider it and decide that's not the right thing for our community. And that's why I hope, I would hope that any, well, so that would go through a zoning process, right, where you were rezoning areas for I, you know, commercial, little commercial centers or expansions of commercial centers. Um, so you'd hope that people would participate and speak up on what they're interested in. Uh, so that conversation, where does that, where does that put us? Are we?
Well, maybe it should be a little less strong. The incentives does make it sound like they're working towards trying to increase it. And, and, and probably, I'm just kind of guessing here because I'm not sure I ever did sit in on a CAC meeting for this group. Most of them I did, but not sure on this one, but I just wonder if maybe you changed it to the county may consider or, or may, may approve neighborhood commercial zones, you know, like, maybe they will, maybe they won't come up with an idea, tell us why it's worthwhile. So instead of the county should consider or provide incentives, it'd be just the county may approve commercial zones, blah, blah, blah.
So the original motion was from Commissioner Powers. If you wanted to make an amendment, if you wanted to withdraw your second, Commissioner Farrar, and make an amendment and redo it, we can do it that.
Well, yeah, I'm making an amendment.
Commissioner Powers, would you like to do that? I can't hear you, sorry.
Sorry, I didn't hear the last part.
Um, so the discussion has been around, um, you could, if you chose to amend your original motion to say the county may consider, may approve a neighborhood commercial zone and take out the incentive part.
Yeah, okay. So what I was going to say, and you can throw me out of the room, is I think we ought to combine B and C, making that last paragraph or the last sentence and C, the action. And then you could also remove the incentive. And just say the county may consider commercial zones allowing for. commercial zones allowing for. Just combine B and C and add that and just modify that last sentence. Anyway.
So it's okay.
Amended or what? I don't sure.
So we're moving this, we're moving C to be under the last sentence of B. Is that the suggestion? Okay, so, um, the motion is that B and C would be combined. And the last sentence of B would be, would read, the county may consider neighborhood community, commercial zones allowing for such uses as a as a gas station or small grocery store in those areas remote from existing commercial areas.
That would be my motion, yes.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor.
Chair, you have two motions on the floor right now.
Oh, well, oh, we, I'm sorry, we were amending.
Well, Mr. Powers didn't make the first one, you seconded.
No, he made the first one. He did make the first one. And then Christopher, yeah, in the end, Commissioner Farrar seconded.
No. I think because Commissioner Farrar was the one who raised the subject of have that Policy C was not a policy, it was merely a statement. And it was seconded by, seconded by Mr. Powers.
Okay.
And we never voted on that. And now there is a second motion on the floor made by Mr. Powers, seconded by Mr. Farrar.
Okay, thank you for, thank you for keeping me in line. Okay, um, let's see. So, let's start over. Should we do that? Um, Commissioner Farrar, would you like to withdraw your, um, motion?
Yes, I withdraw my original motion on Policy C.
And let's redo Commissioner Powers' motion. Is that what we need to do, Director Hendrickson?
Yeah, so I would guess now, uh, Mr. Powers' motion is the one that's left, which is to combine Policy B and what we're calling Policy C, but it's actually a statement. And then to change the language in Policy C, which will move into B, to state that the county may consider neighborhood commercial zones allowing for such uses as a gas station or small grocery store in those areas remote from existing commercial areas.
Okay, so we have that motion and then we have a second from Commissioner Farrar. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Any other suggested changes? Last two pages here, 155, 156. I like the digitizing of the wetland delineations. I feel like that should be required basically when a wetland delineation is done, that they provide data that is GIS compatible. I know you can do that with any survey, so it feels like you should be able to do that with any wetland issues, so it shouldn't be hard. But who knows if everybody's caught up? All right, sounds like we're done. So we're going back to our original motion. It's a race to the beginning. And so, uh, the suggested motion is that is that we recommend the Board of Commissioners adopt the North, oh, sorry, the Lewis and Clark Community Plan as amended. It says actually Northeast Community Plan in the, in the memo, but is it still draft four? Is this draft for Ms. Depper? Yes, okay, so, um. So, uh, recommending the Board of Commissioners adopt the Lewis and Clark Community Plan and draft for as amended. Would some like to make that motion? I'd love it if Commissioner Kwong wanted to make it because he's in that area.
Sure.
Okay. Uh, anyone like to second?
I'll second.
Oh, Commissioner Powers wins. So we have a motion from Commissioner Kwong and a second from Commissioner Powers uh, that the Planning Commission recommends the Board of Commissioners adopt the Lewis and Clark Community Plan Draft for as amended. Uh, this, sorry, Lewis and Clark Only Waluski Community Plan. I don't leave out Olean Waluski. And all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. So it is 2:30. Um, we have made it to Northeast. I know Cheryl Johnson is in the room, who's part of Northeast, and she's been sticking in there for us all day. And so our options are, so we're not going to get through all three before the end of the day. If we're ending at three, um, so we could get open the hearing, hear from Cheryl um, and get started, or we could, um, go ahead and, oh, you know what? I've got to close this hearing first. I'm, my apologies. Um, so the hearing is now closed on the Lewis and Clark Only Waluski. Um, so, uh, what do people want to do today? The other thing is, um, we could jump to I don't know if we can do this, but the project status report and the director's report. Get those done today and then just do the community plans at our June 28th meeting. Thoughts, staff and commissioners?
Well, it seemed to me that we don't really have time to do the Northeast plan. Um, so I guess we would have to do the latter.
And I agree with Commissioner Kwong. I'd like to hear from Cheryl Johnson though, before your, uh, planning commission makes a decision.
She actually was kind enough to, to send a note to say she's also tired. All of our brains are tired and she's, she would be, she, she will attend the June 28th meeting, so. Um, Commissioner Powers?
Well, that's what I was going to suggest, is should we just, uh, listen to the director's report and come back in two weeks? That would be my preference, if, uh, Carol is okay with that, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you. Um. Uh, let's, let's do that. And then let's just get the status report and director's report. Um, I think we could do, get that done in the next half hour.
Yeah, and Chair, if we could have a motion, please, to continue the last three community plans to June 28th?
Yes, thank you.
I'll make that motion. We continue the last three community plans to June 28th.
Thank you. So we have a motion from Commissioner Powers to continue. To continue. Okay, so we have motion in a second to continue, um, agenda items five, six, and seven, Northeast Community Plan Update, Seaside Rural Community Plan Update, and Southwest Coastal Community Plan Update until June 28th, uh, 2022 at 10 a.m. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, so, um, project status, status report, um, you have in your packet there a list of projects, um, any questions or, or comments from staff on the project status report? Hearing none, um, let's move on to the director's report.
Okay, I have to go back to the top of my agenda so I can remember what we're going to be talking about here. All right, um, so the tsunami evacuation facilities improvement plan, the TFP, uh, which your planning commission reviewed, I believe, last month uh, was approved by the board on June 8th, so that, um, we did make the amendments that had been recommended by both your planning commission and the Rec Land Advisory Committee. Uh, so that is done. Uh, our next step is we have incorporated uh, the recommended language into the comprehensive plan update as we've been moving forward. So the next steps would be to coordinate with emergency management and if there's any zoning code changes, uh, to begin initiating those. And that would be in our work plan for fiscal year 22, 23. Any questions about the TFP? Okay, so seeing none, short-term rentals, uh, the plant, uh, the Board of Commissioners did a first public hearing on June 8th of ordinance 22-05. Their second public hearing is scheduled for June 22nd. Uh, and that meeting begins at 6 p.m. It will be a virtual meeting and the link is on the county calendar on our website. Uh, if you have written comments, those should be ma- uh, mailed directly to, uh, the board or, and the clerk of the board, uh, at Commissioners. Was it Commissioners@co.clatzip.or.us? Uh, if you go to the website and just pull up the Board of Commissioners, the email address link is there as well. Uh, any written comments we receive are posted on the calendar page for that June 22nd meeting. Uh, rural ADUs, uh, let me stop, sorry, any questions about short-term rentals? Okay.
Is there any, is there any discussion of, um, caps? So I understand that, that, um, you know, there was an unanimous interest in this group to, um, have put some limit on short-term rentals. It wasn't a unanimous, um, to limit them to commercial multifamily zones, but even those who voted against that voted in support of, um, putting some cap. So I'm wondering if there's any serious discussion of that.
Yeah, to date, at the meetings that we've had with the board, they have not directed staff, uh, to examine caps, nor have they discussed having an interest in it. Uh, what will happen on June 22nd? Obviously, no one can speak to at this point, but to date, they have not.
Thank you.
All right, um, moving on to rural ADUs, we did talk to the board about this and I don't remember anymore when it was because we've had a lot of work sessions, but it was after you all had your meeting in January. Uh, and I met, we did meet with the more board, I think in May at a work session. Uh, we will be drafting some code language that we will be bringing to you, the planning commission, I believe sometime in August is when we've got it scheduled. Uh, we would probably do try to do a work session. Uh, actually, we'll probably do a work session in August with you and then, uh, based on any revisions coming out of that, then bringing that back in September for, uh, public hearing with the planning commission. Any questions about rural ADUs? Okay. All right, so then the next topic, uh, planning commission appointments. So, uh, as Chair Gardner pointed out today, uh, this, uh, well, actually it won't be today, but well, actually no, it won't be today. Sorry, I'm thinking out loud because my brain is also tired. So we do have three, um, commissioner terms who, that will expire at the end of this month on June 30th. Uh, and so Chair Gardner and Commissioner Orr chose not to, uh, ask to be reappointed. So first of all, I did want to say thank you for the work that you've done, both you and Commissioner Orr, who couldn't be here today. Um, I know Chair that you stepped up after, um, Bruce Francis left and took on that position, so thank you to you. Uh, Commissioner Kwong, we're still, we'll find out on June 22nd if you'll be coming back. Um, and hopefully you will be. And if not, I do just want to say as well, thank you to you two for all the work that you've done on this, uh, planning commission. Um, the, so the board did do the interviews back on May 23rd. Uh, they conducted a brief discussion on their work session on June 8th. And the planning commission appointments are scheduled for June 22nd at the regular meeting, which begins at 6 p.m. Any questions about that? All right, and seeing none, um, the final thing, actually two final things, uh, on August 3rd, we've scheduled a joint meeting with the Board of Commissioners and the Planning Commission. That would be at 10 a.m. during their regular work session. Uh, we have not quite finalized the topics yet, so if you do have items that you wanted to bring forward to, for consideration uh, with the board, that if you just would email those to me, and then I can work with the clerk of the board to get the agenda set on that. Um, I think one of the things that we will need to work on and finalize are, are bylaw revisions, which we've been working on for a little over a year. Those have never been finalized yet. And so we need to take care of that issue. Uh, and then the final thing that I had, which I've already mentioned, but I just want to remind everyone, there is a third and final public hearing or public, uh, meeting on the comprehensive plan update. And that will be at 6:30 p.m. It's a virtual meeting and if you go to our calendar uh, date on the webpage, you will find the link to that meeting as well. So, uh, if you couldn't make any of the other meetings, hopefully I'll see you there and probably I'll see Commissioner Farrar there because I think he's at every meeting that I have attended in the past few years. So that's all that I have and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
I have one quick question on the bylaws. Um, until new bylaws are approved or whatever is done to them to make them official. Does that mean we are, um, acting under the old bylaws essentially?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and I do believe, uh, Commissioner Farrar, that in July you will become the, uh, de facto chair of the Planning Commission as vice chair. And then at that time, I think, uh, the Planning Commission will need to make a determination as to whether or not they want to vote to elect a new vice chair, conduct a new election. Or we can just leave it as it is. And then if for some reason you weren't able to make a meeting between now and the election in January, we, the Planning Commission could just appoint a chair for that meeting, uh, during your absence.
Yeah, I, just on that point, and actually, you know, there's a possibility that I won't be on the planning commission either because the board could decide to replace me, but uh, if that's not the case, I would appreciate, um, if you could give me the most, the, the relevant, um, bylaws. Because I'm, I'm a little confused on exactly what bylaws we're acting under. And, and that relates to the idea of an election of a vice chair or not, which I recall was probably not in the bylaws, that it would be just selection of a a different individual for each meeting if the chair didn't show up. Anyway, it, I'd appreciate if you could direct me to the bylaws that aren't in effect.
Yeah, I will send a copy out to all the planning commission members.
And I'd like to just, uh, even though this isn't necessarily, uh, Chair Gardner's last uh, meeting with us, I'd also like to, uh, uh, give my thanks and appreciation for her um, leading the commission through these kind of, uh, very difficult times with the, the meeting format and, uh, quite a, a big change in the makeup of the board over the time she's been on, uh, the commission. And, uh, has always remained, uh, very open to hearing from everybody to the extent that our 24-hour day allows and put in countless hours, as many of us have, and certainly the staff is in that category. But I appreciate greatly the fine job you've done as chair and, uh, want to note that, and I'm sorry that John Orr isn't here today to thank him for his service as well. And so, um, you can be proud of the work you helped, uh, us accomplish here and, and, um, I've learned a lot by seeing the way you conduct a meeting and, uh, I appreciate that experience. And then finally, I'll just note that, uh, today is, is Flag Day and you can see I have my American flag here draped across my couch. I have one outside my garage door too. I hope everybody's flying the flag today. I think we need to support America as one.
I think we've, we've segwayed into the good of the order here, um, with Commissioner Farrar's comments. Does anyone else have any relevant, um, business report or anything you want to share, um, before we close out the meeting today? I think I'm gonna let um Cheryl Johnson speak because she's been waiting for her plan all day, did you want to say something? Mrs. Johnson?
I'm not a member of the planning commission, but I did want to say that um I attended the public meeting. For the uh comprehensive plan, land use plan at Napa High School, and I was very impressed. I I thought it was a very positive, productive experience, um, there was a a large turnout, I quite frankly was surprised. It was a nice variety of people, um, it was old timers and people who have chosen to move to our community. Um, the the kitchen table folks who facilitated it did a really dice job. And hopefully they got some useful information, I, they had a nice way of having us rotate tables and sit with different people and. It it seemed like the tables that I was with liked the po- the process, participated in the process. So I just wanted to report back to you all that that I thought it was very positive. Uh, Chris, how was the turnout at Jewel?
It was uh much smaller, but and Jewel is kind of a smaller area. But it again was a very positive uh evening with uh everybody contributing um. Really uh. Good ideas and there was, I felt quite a, quite a consistency and uh consensus. View from most folks there, although, you know, I think I mentioned earlier that. There's kind of this internal conflict of uh having it very sparsely settled in rural, but yet. Uh, provide opportunity for more economic growth and more housing, it's, it's a really. Tricky uh needle to thread for our county, our county is uh. That that's to me the real challenge for our county to get that right for the people that live here and will live here in the future.
I think it's not just our county, it's everywhere, people want more housing, but not next door to them, that's, that's what you find, um. Uh, thank you, I, um, this is not my last meeting, it turns out, but um I I do want to say thank you to the planning staff. Um, you know, Julia Decker, Gail Hendrickson, Ian Sisson, and um David Cook and Jason Pollock, I haven't worked a few as much, but um and then also the. Past staff that we've lost over the past four years, just a couple, Victoria Sage and others. Um, and then um, and then the commissioners, um, you know, back in the day, working with Mike Magyar and Myrna Patrick. And with this present law, um, all of you bring, um, well, you're, you're willing to put the time in. And show up and um and are really clearly um dedicated to the, you know, the current and future. Livability and safety of our county, the people and the wildlife, and um. I've been honored to serve with all of you, and I've learned so much, and um, you know, being, oh, Bruce Francis, can't forget him, being in his. Um, in his shadow has definitely not been a, an easy task, but I've done my best and um. Tried to do it with a little bit of humor, because sometimes this stuff can be a little dry. Um, but I am a planning nerd and I'll continue to be one, and so you are, you're not rid of me yet. Um, but I'm, I'm happy to step down and leave it in your all uh capable hands and uh. Get back to my family and my paid work, um, it's very hard to be a working person and and do this, and having a young child and uh. Um, COVID has um allowed, you know, a little more flexibility with digital work and that, um, but it is time for me to get back and. And um. Um, so I do with regret, but also joy, step back and um and I thank you all for your service, and I hope that I'll see you. In the forest or on the beach um very soon. Uh, I also want to report that we did close on the Arch Cape Forest on Thursday of last week, so um. We live in a little bit of paradise wrapped with um thirty-two square miles of con- conserved uh forest and ocean. And um I hope that we're an inspiration for other communities to buy back their drinking source like our story already owns. And also um combine it with our amazing um parkland and recreation land and wildlife land and ocean and river. In Cheryl's case, um, so anyway, any other comments before we close? All right, hearing none, um. The meeting is adjourned, have a great day, everyone.